I'm ready.
Okay, call the meeting to order at six o'clock. All right, some announcements before we get started. The Sage Center is having their ice cream social March 27th, 12:30 to 1:30, and a Veterans Breakfast April 10th at 10:00 a.m. Are these in the packet that's posted online, these announcements? Okay. So further details are in the online version of the package for tonight. River Road Resiliency Study, there's a public meeting on Wednesday, April 3rd from 5:30 to 8:00 in the town annex. Is this a hybrid, or is it in person?
I think it's just in person. We just got a draft flyer from the consultant this afternoon. It hasn't been posted yet.
Yeah. Okay, and then Solar Clips viewing event Monday, April 8th from 2:30 to 4:30. That's at Pipe State Hill. See the library and town website for details. And finally, the Conservation Commission is holding a proposed wetlands bylaw information session. That is Tuesday, April 9th at 6:00 in the first floor hearing. Our first item of business is public comment.
I'll jump for that.
All right.
You know why.
If you can introduce yourself and give your.
Chuck Werson, both Bailey's Lane. Just give you some historical background. I was Finance Committee Chairman. I was on the Finance Committee for five years. During that time, we instituted with Tracy Blade the first amount of money to save or store to start fixing things up and to keep going, which we do to this day. My family was also involved with a lot of the programs that happened in town. If you're a longtime resident, you've probably heard about the treasure month, or you know the treasure month. My family put that on. We did a lot of Christmas programs in town. Anyway, I'm here specifically to talk about this whole fiasco with the water commission. I'm hoping that, I don't know their outcome if they voted for it, but I stand by what I said, that it's not that difficult to do an analysis of this particular program to make sure it's both fair and equitable. I have seven people living in my house. I can't live. I found out that actually because I spent $6,000 updating all the utilities in my house, we actually needed it in the wintertime. We don't need it in the summertime because I have seven grandkids that love to turn the sprinkler on. So I'm going to mitigate that problem this year from next year by buying a 2,000 gallon storage tanks and storing 4,000 gallons of water in. And if you're wondering where I get those from, my pool fills every year. I pump down my pool a third of the way. I'm going to take the water instead of dumping it down into Ray Cook's yard. I'm going to put it in the storage tanks and let the kids use it for their playing around. The whole policy of starting of 35,000 gallons as a threshold, and after that, it's the conservation rate, is ridiculous. There, if we are going to be a town of families, we have to assume that there's more than 2.8 people per house. I know personally a lot of families that have four people in them, two adults and two kids. And it would be better, and I stand by what I said, I offered to do the analysis for the town. And if you're wondering how I would do the analysis, we know all the street addresses, we know all the houses in town, we have census that we get every year that lists the number of people in each house. We know the water consumption, and we can do a better job of figuring out which ones are not wasting water and who is wasting water. And that would be an easy analysis to do. So I'm hoping you're not going to vote $20 extra for this conservation rate, because that's absolutely stupid. Anyway, that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, so you realize this board has nothing to do with the water department setting the rates?
Yeah, I understand that.
All right, just.
But I saw it on the agenda that they were going to come and talk about it.
No, this is just an update from the town manager or the department about, you know, that we had the heat. So it's just really an update.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I thought the comment from one of the commissioners was absolutely stupid. When he told me that I could go before the water commissioners and they would give me a dispensation for it. And I thought, well, come on, there are probably five. If we live according to averages, there are 500 people, 500 houses in town that also have that same dispensing, that should be able to go through this. So it's absolutely ludicrous to have this. And the process that they ran was absolutely the dumbest thing I've ever seen. That they held it close to their vest, they announced they were going to hold a meeting, they gave us the results, and then voted on it. And didn't even bother to listen to any of the result of people complaining, God was building when they're, you know that from waiting. So, okay, I said it.
All right.
Thank you for giving my time.
I appreciate your input. All right, we'll move on.
Actually, can I just?
Okay.
That's fine. Actually, you're right. It's not a point for, we're not in discussion at this point here.
Okay, thanks. All right, the next item is Town Manager's Updates.
Yeah, so the materials in the packet gives us some more detail on the telecom procurement and the supplement that was issued last week with the additional detail regarding the cabling as part of that scope. You may have seen within the addendum, we set the deadline for submissions as April 24th. The idea of that was that it would happen ahead of town meeting. So I'm going to be asking both this board and the FinCom to consider making a recommendation prior to, you know, start a town meeting. So whether it be the evening of 29th, or whether it be, you know, late the prior week. But this is one where it is going to go to the kind of to the last minute. So I just wanted to keep this updated on the agenda so that you're aware of the direction that we're going on that.
And do you have a sense that there will be multiple firms?
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's been a lot of interest. So, you know, depending on how the bids come in, we do, as you know, have a certain amount of funding already allocated from a couple of years ago. So, you know, we'll see where the bids come in. We expect it to exceed that, but we really don't have a sense of how much. Next item, the Page, Pipe Safe Crosswalk and Page Circulation. This is really a, you know, we've got to figure out what amount you'd like to propose, if any, for the town meeting for this article. And we have this penciled in for Wednesday, or actually it's on the agenda for Wednesday's FinCom Select Board Meeting. So the detail in the memo tells you kind of what we're looking at and why, and what the existing, the state earmark could offset that if you chose to allocate it to this. So is there enough information in the memo to give the board kind of the options as to how much to allocate?
You have the information you need?
Yeah, I know more in the packet too about the whole page thing later on. Okay, so you've got to sort of blend those two together. I mean, the whole page site becomes a mess.
Yes.
So that's what I'm trying to sort out in my head. How do you bring that all together at one point? You've got the crossing, you've got the traffic patterns. Whether we renovate the school, you know, there's a lot of issues that all blend together. You'd hate to spend all this money on issues and then in a short timeframe, which I anticipate, move on from page. I don't know. So I think a lot of consideration with, even the first issue makes you look at all the others down the road.
Your first issue being the crossing?
Crossing, I'm just, yeah, because that's the one in front of us.
Right, right.
You've got the traffic circulation, and obviously doing the repair of the landfills, which is a whole other issue. Landfills, whatever. Oh, and now I've lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
That's all right, Chris. Whatever, there's a lot going on, and you have to make the overall picture.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I mean, I'm just not having, you know, none of us having time to dig in on the Page School study yet. You know, the draft of the Page School condition study. It makes me gun shy about doing anything. Because, you know, the Page School overall is such a huge, huge concern, a huge topic. And you can't even begin to predict where it's going to go. So I just don't want to sink more. And then we find out what's, was, you know, was not productively spent. And it's, you know, because who knows what's going to happen there? And if, and if the ultimate conclusion is, and obviously this is a huge topic because it would cost a lot of money, but if the conclusion is that it's actually cheaper, less expensive to replace page than to try to make it right, you know, to, you know, there's certain things we'll have to do, and then we hit the trigger point, you know, the 30% of value trigger point, and then the sky's the limit. And so if we hit that point, then talking about circulation now is to sell because we have no idea what the site will look like. Yeah, that's where, you know, I feel like the existing crossing where we made an investment with a couple of steps down the road on that one, I would recommend we go forward with that. Whether, you know, it doesn't necessarily need a town meeting funding because the net cost, if we applied the earmark to that, would be 18,000. So that could be a town meeting article, or it could be ARPA.
So are we obligated to address the DOT concern number two, though, if we move ahead with the crosswalk?
Yes.
You know, so then that.
Yeah, yeah, either the, yeah, either the, there's, you have to be a change to the right of way to encompass the retaining wall or the wall would actually have to be moved to be within the right of way. So it's really.
There's no recourse on that? They would reconsider? I don't know what argument that would be based on. It just seems unnecessary.
Significantly adding significant complication and cost to, we never thought would be a simple project, but it should be more straightforward, and this really is a big monkey wrench. Yeah, because if we change the shape of the right of way, you know, if we add space to the right of way, what does that, what might that do to some future plan for access to the site? You know, for the traffic circulation, that would, we even have the same two entrances. Well, I think, and I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I think even if the right of way was expanded, they would still want that retaining wall to a certain standard. And that's now within state layout. I don't think they're going to, you know, I don't think this is going to make it to the 100% design without them
addressing.
wanting some changes made to that retaining wall to make it more structurally sound.
Yeah.
Okay, so are you, this is just an update?
Well, it's an update, but we do have the, you know, we need to make a decision on what funding, if any, to see under this article.
And that's tonight, or?
You said Wednesday.
I think I have that on for Wednesday.
Okay.
So I feel like we'll go two days down the road today.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so we'll move on to item C, Borrowing for Church and Prospect.
All right, this is really just a schedule update. We did submit our annual report, so that's, you know, the big step in the process. We have this tentative schedule with Hilltop. We do need to just pin down the date in June when the borrow would be formally authorized by the board. And we have since scheduled the ratings call with Standard and Poor's for the, for May 6th. But that's when we'll have the confirmed amount for the debt service for the water. But we did, we did confirm recently that Hilltop stands by the estimates they provided back in January. They thought those were still good numbers for budgeting. Are the numbers, we say those are good numbers still for budgeting, meaning that what they quoted coupon is still a reasonable number?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, and then item D, speaking of landfills.
I just want to make you aware, since this is, yeah, so this is remedial work. This is not, you know, it's not restoration. It's really a safety-based repairs, yeah. And I'm not sure if you're all aware, but there was a portion of one of the landfills that actually fell down about two weeks ago. Were you aware of that? Yeah, above, above the kind of what used to be the main entrance, the left of what is now the main entrance on the front of the.
The stairs.
There were, there were significant pieces of plaster that, or concrete.
It's concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they landed on that roof over, over the.
No, they landed on the stairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Question on the contract. It lists the dates of work, June 1st to June 30th. Is school still in session for a good portion of June? Is that wise?
Let's see. Yeah, I was wondering about the date too, because school probably goes until, what, May 6th?
Yeah, I would make sure that, I would suggest that you have students on site and they're knocking concrete down. Last one more question.
Sure.
The money doesn't, what was June 30th? You know what, June 30th was pictured as the must-be completed date? No?
Was there a sunset?
Yeah, it was, it was a sunset on the article. That wouldn't, if the work is under contract and underway, Jenny wouldn't, she's not going to, you know, she's not going to. So that shouldn't have mattered. Yeah, yeah, yes, just, it seems as though it would make sense to do it after kids are gone.
We do see approved 50 grand for the work. The contract says not to exceed, and I saw it when I was, it came in. Wasn't approved with 50?
I thought that was in the, in the warrant article, wasn't it?
I don't recall.
Yeah, do you recall any of this?
I don't know.
Either way, we've got enough to cover.
Yeah.
Okay, any others that aren't listed in this Town Manager Updates?
No.
So there's nothing for department updates, item C, so move on to item D, Board Commission Committee Updates.
We have the Capital Improvement Committee Report. And they are recommending increase to the operating budget, additional 300,000 in the stabilization, and to transfer the same amount of free cash to offset the budget so that it's not, it doesn't affect the tax rate. So that's something that you'll want to consider either tonight or Wednesday with FinCom in terms of the stabilization transfers. It's not a stabilization, but there's that article on free cash transfer. So that was one of the more significant things coming out of the report. The other, they did refer to see the, both these crews are the operating budget.
What was the?
No.
What was the discussion on that?
Well, I actually, I, I think it makes sense. I, I, I mean, I.
You put both sides to the issue.
That's right, and I, and I, you know, listening to the argument, I mean, I was on the fence and I quite honestly saw that it wasn't worth, in my mind, it wasn't worth, it wasn't a hill to die on in the discussion here with FinCom. But it happens regularly. We know it's going to happen. And, and, and there may be years where it doesn't happen, but that is the exception. And I, you know, I look at it as an operating expense.
With a capital N.
But it's an operating expense.
All right, I mean, we don't have to, I just found it.
Well, you asked me, so that's the way I feel.
Yeah. I assume Ross also voted if he's seen it.
We'll slap him right against it too.
Anything else on the capital improvement?
You know, there was definitely some discussion about the litmus test and whether it makes sense to do it the way they did, with the way they've always done it. It seems to me, and Rick was at the meeting as well, it seems like there's a clear majority of people that think there's a better way, and maybe even everybody. I think even, even some of the long-term members seem to think there's a better way. They just hadn't seen it yet.
Yeah, nobody has ever been enamored of that success.
So it seems like everybody's open to something different, and so it was definitely discussed that after this cycle, it would make sense to start, you know, late spring or early summer in terms of what might be a better way to do it. So I thought that was promising, because one of the concerns I've had, especially with the number of articles we have, is I think anything that's in the top, or I'm sorry, the bottom third, some number of people might look at and say, oh, those are unimportant, and they really aren't. If you look at some of those, they're very much not unimportant. They are very important. So, and I just think that linear listing is, you know, could be, could be overread by people. So I think there's openness to change how they do it, but everybody agreed, and it was certainly correct, that it was way too late, late in the cycle to do it. Yeah, I mean, there are 25 items, and everybody is going to have their own interpretation of several of the items, you know, unique interpretations of several of the items. If there probably are a few, well, the interpretation is not open to question. But many, maybe as many as half of the, half of the items on the litmus test are really subject to how you read the language, you know, and what's your background? You know, what's, what, what, how do you, you know, what seems important to you based on who you are?
The look of the matrix, and that made it really curious. You can tell that's what it values.
Right, yeah.
Because I saw the river road at the end, and I'm like, Rick must have been pulling his hair out on that one.
Right, well, you know, and it's also based on, you know, say, in the case of, you know, myself sitting on this board and understanding the background on a bunch of issues that other people don't have the benefit of, you know, I look at it at them differently. You know, and I, and I might weigh, you know, one of the things is, you know, social impact. You know, I might weigh that differently based on knowing something that nobody else is going to know.
Yeah. I'm just, I don't even know, is there a real value in having this ranked list? I mean, you know.
I think, as I guess, I think it's almost dangerous because you start with one, and if you're going to have to cut, it's going to be the last item on the list, but it's very dangerous that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I do want to say I do commend the committee and its members for returning this out and hitting it, you know, timely.
Yeah, within a month, right? Pretty close.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, the information was later this year than we hoped. And so I know people really did make significant efforts to.
Yeah, well, basically, I mean, we met on a Wednesday, and we, everybody.
It was on Sunday, Thursday.
It was Thursday, it was on Thursday, and everybody was done with everything on Sunday.
Yeah.
Ben, did you have something, Chris? All right, item DB is the Board of Water Insurance Public Hearing. So this is just a recap.
Yeah, I think, let's see, Chris, you weren't there.
No, but I looked at the slide.
So, so most of you were there, and so you know that they did vote the rate. There is expectation that that's actually not going to take effect. It won't affect the April bill, because the April bill is for water that's already been drawn in prior, since the prior reading in the fall. So the commissioners expect that it will take effect, basically for water that's being drawn now. But people wouldn't see that until their October bill.
But that hasn't been voted on yet.
Correct, right, they hosted a meeting today, they're going to be this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. So I'll be there for that, and, you know, I think that makes sense and it definitely satisfies the Finance Department or the Department of Revenue's objectives of having rates in fiscal '25 that covers their fiscal '25 expenses. Obviously, you know, debt service for the Church and Prospect Project is a major driver on the need for rate increase.
And so having it be going forward, a notice will go out with the water bill, so people will be aware of it, which I think was some of the concerns about the way that it was being rolled out.
That's right, yeah, my, my understanding is Jack Duggan is working on drafting notice for Thursday's meeting for the board's water commissioners to review and approve for that. He sent out the bills.
Okay, and you said they're also going to discuss the whole evaluation of.
The large users, yeah. The users about the conservation rate threshold.
Right, did you have any questions, Chris?
No, they have to raise the rates. It's almost an issue just how they do it.
Right.
Like how much they do it.
Well, I can understand your contention, you know, you're one of those really unique issues that they may or may not consider.
I don't think I'm really that unique. There are so many families.
There's other people in households that want it.
Yeah, that's, well, you know, the problem is you can't afford a house anymore. So we give it to our kids, and so as part of that, they're living with us.
Yeah.
And I just appreciate your situation.
All right, and move on to the action items. Item A, Request for Appointment of Zachary Dunn as a Rezaki Sasha, isn't that you?
Zach, yeah, comes from the Essex County Sheriff's Department where he works full-time. He's expressed the interest for quite a while now in joining our department to work in this wonderful town. He is Bridge Academy certified and certified through the state through the post-regulation. So he would just need to go through our local field training program. We play with the background check on him. Everybody can check that, which is fine. He's from Beverly, Massachusetts, where he grew up, enlisted in the United States Marine Corps, and now lives in Flatskow.
And how long is the internal training program?
We like to see it go as quickly as humanly possible. It's, so it's always dependent on the.
The individual.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're confident that he'll be justified.
So, yeah, regarding the internal training, what, you know, so what is the process?
It's learning, learning the town, learning how the town operates. We just did a walk through the town office building. We talked about how to sit down, how to hall.
Most of them are perfect.
As a first classer. Right. Learning our systems that are unique to West Newbury. Learning geography, that's just a whole checklist of things that each officer is responsible for, at least being taught, and then demonstrating proficiency.
I just want to say, I'd like to let you put together, since the last time you came in, I started asking all these questions, basically dressed them on the left, so.
You think?
Don't skip your question.
I do listen.
I use Zach.
Yes, sir.
Nice to meet you, Chris.
Nice to meet you.
Have a motion?
Yeah, no, I, I'm good. So I make motion that we appoint Zachary Dunn, I'm sorry, as a reserve police officer.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just know in terms of the term, typically that.
Oh, that's great, yeah. Effect immediately and until June 30th, 2024, at which point all officers are reappointed each year.
Right.
So that's, yeah, that's, so they vote them every, every year. It was not like, it's nothing to worry about, but just in terms of the term, it's always done by fiscal year. So, and our fiscal years go from July 1st to June 30th in the next year.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, welcome.
Hey, appreciate it. So Jim is the town clerk. We'll have you, we'll set up an appointment with Swan and take it from there.
And then, yeah, pre-employment paperwork. Has he already been attached with Caitlin?
We'll do that next.
Okay, great, great, great.
All right, thank you.
Do you need that for any other agenda items?
I don't believe so.
Great to go.
What do you have to do?
Thank you. Item B, Request to Nominate Glenn Congswell as an additional inspector of animals.
And it actually should be Kayla as well. The agenda was put together, Jeff Glenn was put on there, and I confirmed with, as I was putting the materials together, you know, both of these were named in your January vote.
Yeah.
Jeff's Kayla's name was on the agenda, but both of them were named in the packet materials. So this is a separate nomination that needs to happen, but I confirmed with Rebecca that it really should.
Yeah.
So this is.
Kayla Reventure as well as Glenn Congswell.
And that has to be done, was it April, beginning of April of the year?
Yes.
Yeah. So are they both inspector of animals?
Yes.
And they're both animal control officers?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, because otherwise you wouldn't be able to go up to the sidewalk, so horses are.
Can I make a motion to appoint Glenn Congswell and Kayla Reventure as inspector of animals?
Burn. Okay, burn.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Section, item number four, they, animal inspector must ensure that all animals, while they're domestic, which must be tested for rabies, are captured and euthanized. There's not a contest or something, and then you've got to cut their head off and send it into the state. So it seems a little harsh, right? I don't even know what it all means. I don't even know what it all means.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a mistake. It's a typo.
Uh, so if you think something's got rabies, you test it, you gotta capture it and kill it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well. Even without a validation of the test?
I think you would test it first.
The, the idea, the idea would be if it's suspected to have rabies and you have nothing that says it has a rabies shot, you have to. Because you can't test something for rabies, that's not, the only way to test something for rabies is to kinda go inside and.
I know a couple people in town I think have rabies. Does it work that way?
It is, it has.
I don't think you'd be able to bludgeon any of your rabies.
That just seemed like incredibly, it made me cringe when I read it.
It's, I, I had to go through something like this with my father's daughter because, uh, she had, had been and the animal control officer in Orlando was, uh.
If you had valid rabies certificates up to date, we're okay then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, that's the whole point of the prospect of, of actually, it was, so I, I brought her to Maine.
I brought her to the Brown Dog Inn.
Actually, Jenny knows this story, I brought her to the Brown Dog Inn and, uh, runs with Maine. And I checked her in with no checkout date and spent a lot of money until it got worked out because I, I couldn't handle.
Yeah.
The idea that they were gonna.
So you aided and abetted a fugitive?
We couldn't, we, we, we didn't hear that.
Alright.
Yeah, that's, that's got.
That was enough.
Alright, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, the next item is, uh, request to authorize town manager to execute a three-year lease for Chilis Castle.
So we did do the RF, uh, uh, or two, uh, but we just had the, uh, one response and then we kind of pulled the responses and, uh. We're ready, uh, we got the nine, new lease.
So, is this monthly rental correct?
Yeah.
It's pretty staggering.
It is, it is.
Yeah. Uh, the other thing I found interesting is the whole Lesor, Lessee versus Grant War and Grantee in the CR, they're flipped. Um, as to which one is the, I mean, it's just kind of curious, cause this talks about the Lessee being the town. And the CR, the Grantee with the town.
With the lease so that we see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's opposite of the CR, that's what I'm saying, yeah, anyway, any questions on?
Yeah, one can make a motion and ask questions, make a motion, authorize the town manager to sign the lease for the Chilis Castle.
Alright. Session.
Yeah, and this is general, like, first of all, Dr. Narra was exceptional, and so I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor of that, I mean, it was really good. And not a surprise that they almost responded.
Yeah.
And I think, uh, it is a good service in benefit to the town. The liability insurance is, for as long as I can ever recall, not just on this, but almost everything, it's a million dollars. That, that, does it ever go up, I know in, you know, general construction boss and they went for five or ten, but I just. At some point, those numbers must have to, a million dollars is not a lot when you got sued.
Yeah, it seems to be the standard, uh, for this kind of stuff.
It does, because nobody's changed it.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, I've wondered about that too.
That?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a million and two million on the, uh, uh, facility use policy. When I started, it was one and three. And I, I remember my first year, I talked with insurance, uh, because we would, we would get some pushback from some renters, um. About three million, I talked to insurance, they thought the one and two was fine, so the board in December of twenty eighteen voted to change that, uh, to one and two, which is where it's been since, um. Uh, so I can ask insurance what they, you know, I think for the purpose of this, I, you know, I think we should go forward.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just saying in general, I think it's like, yeah, all these things.
As to the, uh, I mean, the fact is, insurance would, would rather we not lease our properties, they've been really clear about that. Uh, and, and in fact, if these were not pre-existing, um, you know, I think. They would, they would, they would cover it.
Um, so two more questions, one to talk about, um, they have the use of the stairways halls designated parking, it doesn't specifically re- reference outside activities, they have a play area, don't they?
Yeah. Yeah, Sharon in the, uh, in the, yeah, we did that except for this year for the first time, that's how it exists.
So is that a racetrack, the eight, the number eight?
Much more.
That's funny.
Infinity.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Last question.
So that's the part that they raised on me.
Yeah. It talks about the Lesor, that's the town, is gonna pay for electricity, utilities, water, everything else. Do we know what that cost is?
We do, uh, we get a, well, so, so we get an invoice every year from Pawtucket, uh, for a certain percentage. Uh, of their total utility bills for the year, uh, so I do know what that amount is, I don't, I don't have it to the top of my head, for some reason, I, I wanna say it's like. In the eighteen to nineteen thousand dollar range, but I, but I have, I have that number, actually, you might.
Yeah, don't, but I would say.
That's what the whole complex page in.
Correct, uh, well, so it's, it's for the children's castle portion of paid school, I would say it's like eight point five percent.
I was gonna say it's around sixteen thousand, so we're not far off.
So it sounds like it's somewhere between.
Twelve hundred a month in Robins.
Yeah, it, it's.
Average.
Yeah, it's, it's a little over ten percent.
So you still have that, no, ten, eleven thousand?
Yes.
That's all you get, I find it, you pay an eighth grand to get a little thousand dollar check.
Right, right.
Good.
Right, Rick, any other?
Um, no, I just say that, I guess I'm not surprised that the only response was for children's castle, I'm certainly glad that they continue to, to provide it, cause I think it's a really. Critical service for the town and I can't imagine anybody else would be able to step into the situation and do as good a job as they have historically done.
I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, so what, how do you wanna hand over the middle street, do you want to hold off on that and try to get to anything else?
Uh, yeah, I think that'd be good, yeah.
Alright, so we'll go ahead to item E, review the draft harbor master, IMA.
Alright, so, uh, you have a markup in front of you with changes from the current IMA that runs through June thirtieth, so, uh, you know, I've had some discussions with Neil Parentin. Uh, he understands that everything we talked about is not, doesn't reflect the board's endorsement, uh, we just wanted to get something that was, um. Suitable for, for this board and for his select board to review, so, uh, if you're content with it, you could, um, vote it tonight, but if you have questions and wanna discuss it, it, it's really not. There's not a huge urgency on this one, even though it does have budget implications, but the, the main reason is, um. Everything that we expend on the pump out, we get back, uh, just about seventy-five percent from the state under Clean Vessel Act, so. Um, and the costs that you see, the actual budget cost is, is about a quarter of the out-of-pocket cost, cause we get the reimbursement. And secondly, there is the water waste fund, uh, which is basically a safety net to cover, so for the, historically, what we've done for the last four or five years since we. Added the enforcement presence to the, uh, agreement is pay that portion of the cost out of the water waste fund. Um, so, so while it's related to budget, it's not gonna hold up approval of the operating.
So these numbers, it was like basically ten hundred and twelve thousand when you total them up over the three years.
Mm-hmm.
So you're saying those are gonna get out of a couple of thousand dollars after reimbursement?
The pump out costs go down by three quarters, it's not exactly seventy-five percent because of some nuance on.
Yeah, but twenty twenty-six is eight grand, so that'll be roughly two or three.
That's, yes.
And then you add the twenty-five hundred for the enforcement and then the five hundred for the vote.
Right.
Okay, so the numbers are significantly reduced.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
One point, we also mentioned about possibly partnering with Hable and Eastbury instead?
Yeah, so we had, that was, uh, the reason we put in the language about allowing for termination upon ninety days' notice rather than ninety days prior to the expiration. Uh, that gives, that gives us flexibility on, uh, you know, if we were to find a better, uh, intermunicipal agreement, uh. Uh, during the term of the agreement, we wouldn't be locked into this. I do think that, uh, you know. One thing this does not have, which we might wanna consider adding before executing this or, or something like it, is. Uh, exactly how would that work if, if one or the other party withdrew during the term of the agreement? Uh, normally, like with the agreement we have with Merrimack, there would be specific language on how, how that cost share would be reconciled. Uh, and I think we have similar language with the animal control of Newbury Court where, you know, in the event one or the other party pulls out, there's basically an accounting that as of that date. You know, the costs are, are split in the same proportion. Um, can, can we? Is it reasonable to think that if we, if we got noticed on, you know, April first, April Fool's Day, that, um, they were, um, terminating, they wanted to terminate the agreement in three months? Is it reasonable to think that we could put something together, um, in three months to replace it? So. Um, I, I'm just wondering if, if the termination should be, uh, should give more time?
Well, I think the other question is, do either Hable or Eastbury have any interest in accommodating? I mean, Salisbury seems like a long ways away to get out.
Right.
It seems like more of a courtesy and inconvenience to them, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not looking to change particularly.
Right.
Didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, there would be, yeah, logically, it seems like someone closer could, could work, but I have not had those conversations. No, I mean, I, I think this seems, as far as I know, this is working great and it's been solid and consistent.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't heard complaints, but I'm not necessarily engaged with the people who would be complaining, um, if there were complaints, but I still just wonder. You know, if, if they would decide they wanted to terminate for some reason, would three months be enough time for us to put together an alternative? At the beginning, you know, if it was right before the beginning of voting season?
I'm not sure if they wanna terminate because.
Yeah, we get the vote.
They get the vote from us and they're getting.
Right, but I don't, yeah, right, but I, I don't know what else is, there is going on in the world.
Well, we, we have, we'll take the ball up.
So do you think we should make it a longer term than ninety days?
I think six months would, yeah, I'd be mutually agreeable.
Okay, right, were you alright with that, Chris?
Oh, I know, yeah, and if we're gonna modify it also, Angus's agreement as to how you calculate.
Yeah, yeah, there's language like that, when we put this in, it was really just to capture the idea of allowing for, uh. Withdrawal other than at the end of the term, but we didn't flesh it out in terms of some of the legalese that you would normally put in there in terms of how that is accounted for, so. That's, that's language that we could, uh, get from one of our other agreements and put that in.
Good.
Again, generally, it seems to be working.
It is, it is.
Yeah, and, and, and it seems like, you know, you, you and Neil, you know, you and the town manager of Salisbury typically engage more than three months. I mean, this is more than three months before the, you know, the end of the agreement right now, so I just think having more time to make that change because. Um, not everybody will be able to or be interested in, in, you know, providing, you know, service through an IMA like this.
Alright, so what I will do is make, I'll, I'll let Neil know, kind of generally, there's gonna be agreement, these are gonna be the changes we're gonna look to. And that allows him to move forward with his board and then later the sprint will bring something back.
Thank you.
Right. Uh, but it, it really won't move, uh, the budget number one way or the other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, alright, IMF, uh, review appropriation for testing if attention to public water site, that's deferred pending discussion, consult. Um, so we'll move on to IMG, request to renew the deed for two Astre properties to the Mass Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. Any questions on this?
Yeah, it's gonna get to a bird, go too fast. So it sounds like whatever the year was when these two parcels were inappropriately transferred, they must have had a, nobody was checking documents at the registry or something? I mean, it's just very bizarre.
Well, I think one of the things that was probably going on is there were, there were, I think, a bunch of properties that, where there were takings by the federal government. Um, and probably true things in the term one.
So why all of a sudden is it stayed interested in these properties?
They said it was just housekeeping, they're trying to straighten things out.
They could have said West Newbury, keep it and run the deed that way, I just don't know if they have further plans.
Wait, they could have said it again, they could have what?
They could have turned it over to West Newbury, that we give our right to it and let West Newbury keep the property.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, I mean, it.
That, that to me would be a preferable option.
Well, it sounds like the state has legitimate ownership.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, you know, and it's part of their, um, habitat management.
I'm just making sure it's not a bigger issue picture, that's all, I'm curious.
As far as we can tell, there is none, like Christian, the assessors, then all three.
Council's been through it, I know that.
Well, council's been through it, but, but she did say that to, to, to attest that, she said everything looked correct, but to actually. Say that definitively would be a title attorney and, and, you know.
Lots of money.
Yeah, a lot of money, so, yeah, and one, one thing she did confirm, which we saw in the packet, which was very important to the compound, was that. They cannot do anything with the land other than conservation purposes, so what, you know, when, when, I think it was the, uh, the, uh, December eighteenth meeting maybe was when I brought over the initial correspondence that we got from them, uh, kind of late fall. And, uh, we had had a meeting, I think the second weekend. With the attorney Christine Smith and my observation was that it seemed like Christine Smith, the attorney, uh, was fairly new to the agency and had, had been, uh, maybe. I don't know, a few months or six months and it seemed like had been tasked with kind of cleaning up what, what they described as a very messy situation because of the. Number of plant takings that took place and the, the poor documentation back in the forties and fifties. It's, it seems like it's just a long, long, longstanding housekeeping item that, you know, I think, Chris, your, your question, why is it a priority now? Is a good question, my best answer is it seems like it's just housekeeping and they're.
No employee with a program.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it seems like, yeah.
Alright, so do you want to make a motion?
Uh, make a motion, you'll be able to sign that document for at least the two Astre properties back to the state.
Uh, sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. So then. I do have the originals in the office.
You do, what?
No housing on those now.
You bet that.
Said no housing on those now, that's ridiculous.
Alright, and next item, special event request, myopia, Hunt Club Fox is not even being seen. I see there's a map.
There is, yeah, thank you for the map.
Wait, is that the map?
Cindy, what?
She gets, she and I just spoke and it's not, doesn't cross any streets, it's just in Pipe State, Dunn and.
It's amazing when you have a map, you can actually see that so clearly.
So just as a, a point here, she's applying on behalf of the Hunt Club, so it should be nonprofit or something other than relevant. Uh, any questions on any of the other information?
This is just the first, like, we have two.
Correct.
No, on the map, and again, it is all on Mill Pond, but I go to the left side, I don't know what's going on.
What's second day?
What's that?
What's the second one, the second day?
That's a different, that's a riding drive.
Yeah, that's a whole.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're not. So yours, that's because you have a black and white copy.
It's, it's slightly confusing, it's all on.
It's all on Mill Pond.
No crossing a road, so that's.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's a loop over on the, on, on the, um, uh, west side of Mill Pond, it's confusing here and, and it crosses itself.
Alright, any other questions and motion?
Well, yeah, I move that we, um, approve the special event request for the, my, yeah, on Fox Club for May twenty-eighth, twenty-fourth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item is the West Newbury Riding and Driving Club Adventure Ride, June fifteenth and. September fifteenth. Any questions on this?
Yes.
Chris?
On both those dates, my question is, are there any conflicting events at Pipe State? Because these run from eight AM to two. And I know that there have been issues in the past with sporting activities and parking conflicts, so I think that's kind of important to plan around, so.
So we, we have been approved by Parking Act and in the presence of the flag football guy, who said that. Now that there are more ball fields available to them over at Pawtucket, there's less pressure here and so he said you would not have any contracts.
Next question, police chief, does he review and sign this?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Oh, I thought I saw that.
It's not, is it? The, the other curiosity on this one, I've been asking, I understand, talks about only police officers may direct traffic on town streets, but it said no assistance needed. So, I don't know how you deal with that.
We, we, we position people at the end of the driveway. Wearing vests. Wearing vests that we get from the police and clothes that we get from the police.
But you're not in the road.
No, not for these events, no.
So does that answer your question?
You cross the road?
I haven't decided what September fifteenth is gonna do yet, so reserve the right to come back and discuss that. Riverbend trails today have a lot of trees down. And um nobody, uh I've talked to other than the Morons who live on down on the river, um have ridden in there. They're basically impassable. I've got an ECTA meeting tomorrow night and I will bring it up as an agenda item. To for both um physically, physical manpower and ECTA generally uses the chestums. Who you know live in town and are licensed and insured tree guys. They've cleared the water tower trail the last couple of years. And I believe that they will cut any big trees down in Riverbend. I mean, this used to be done by Alex and my hus- my husband, and then Steve Griesen, and then John Dodge, but in this era of wanting it to be done.
Professionally.
Professionally, um if ECTA has the staff and as well as the best practices management plan for the trails in there.
For wetlands?
Yeah, I mean, we have to give notice if we, and 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 there are, there are a lot of wetlands in there. Those trails have been rerouted a number of times and trying to make them better, but you can't make them dry.
Right, so do you want to come back then, when you know for sure if you're gonna cross the road? Because that's a missing piece here.
Before, and for the September ride.
But so June, you will not be crossing the road?
No.
Okay.
So what you see for the myopia route, we're gonna use those same trails. I don't know the uh um a- a- and the June ride is um a little different format than we've done before. And and so people will be going in multiple, I think they're gonna go in multiple directions at once. It's sort of like a treasure hunt. They've gotta find seven different places and then come back. So it's. We've been doing this event for about twenty years, but we've decided to do it a little differently.
Okay, so.
Make the motion work if you want.
Yeah, so I mean, I know you have described the route, but a map would be helpful in the future, if you can put a map in as well.
The the September fifteenth ride, which is the one where they go out at five minute intervals and they all follow the same route. Um, we may well want to cross Main Street, and I will definitely get you maps of that.
Okay.
So should we then approve just the fifteen?
Just June.
Yeah.
Okay, then both are out. I'll try the motion, see if I like it enough. Make a motion, approve the West Newbury Riding Driving Club events, June fifteenth. And September, whether the eighteenth or fifteenth.
I use eighteen.
Eighteen, pending approval, police chief, and submit all maps.
And and who's gonna review the police chief and maps?
Well, I have to go to the police chief, he knows what the road crossings are. If he signs off, I'm good.
Alright, so we're counting on Jim to.
Jim's a man.
Alright. My second.
Okay.
You just don't have to have Deb come back.
Yeah.
That seems simple.
But but we don't need the maps for Jim, since we're staying on Mill Pond.
It would be good to have, you you don't need it for this application, but I'm just asking going forward, even if you describe it, if you could provide a map that would make Jim happy. And. Alright, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item is a special event request for the Alzheimer's Association sun ride.
We do have uh sponsors here, we assume.
Hello, Roger.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Nice to see some faces from last year, so.
Yeah. Any questions from either of you on this? You sent a map, just came in.
Uh, yes, I I did send that around.
Oh, you did, okay.
I didn't see it. Right over there?
Oh, there it is, okay.
Ask two questions?
Yes.
Talks about signage. Is it any gonna be, um, any pre-notice signs warning of the event ahead of time?
Whatever you require. Generally, because this is the twenty-eighth year for this event and the routes are essentially unchanged. We've been putting them out a week before eighteen by twenty-four chloroplast. Um, and I think that satisfied the requirement last year, so we will continue to do that.
Yeah, it just didn't mention that in the application, I think that's.
Totally understood, yep.
Yeah, but people know it's really nice. Again, last question is the police chief's signature lacking.
Uh, I did get the police chief's email on this one as well.
Yeah, it's in here.
Thought it was in there. So the signature's not there, but his email with his um request.
Yeah, he said two detail officers.
Yeah.
Any questions, Ben?
Roger, you're in touch with the police chief or you read that?
I have been, yes, and that that last email was that about the two detail officers. Um, and then, of course, I would follow up pending your decision and and get whatever signatures are that you need me to get if that's not done internally. Um, also, we always issue certificates of insurance for our host townships and everything, and I'll have those. They are reissued uh first week of April, so once those come in, I'll send them out to everybody.
So, yeah, I moved that we uh approved the special event request for an Alzheimer's Association fundraiser bike ride on June first, twenty four.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey.
Again, and so, Jim, I guess you'll be the contact.
Alright, seeing as how it's just about seven, I think we should halt here and. Move to the joint.
Jim up? My, yeah. Seven oh one.
Exactly.
Seven is not. So he won't be up for four minutes, okay.
In person?
I, uh, on Wednesday, I'm gonna call.
Okay.
Jim's here early tonight. If you go to the bathroom.
That's called a word?
Sure, uh, we're here with a forum. So we're in order.
What do you think about doing the warrant articles first?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Absolutely yes or absolutely no?
Yeah.
Very good. Alright, so we'll start with article sixty-two, which is the citizens' petition for a forty R study donating MBTA communities, donating. What's that? He's online?
Oh.
Nope. It looks different online, live and personal.
There, there is someone there.
Yeah, Lisa's listening, but I was there listening to the rest of the meeting.
Oh.
Mostly I wanted to hear what was going on with the bridge, but.
Have to wait for that.
Yes, this is the new high-quality virtual.
Yeah, he's beamed in, hologram.
Right, exactly, hologram. Press this on page twenty-five.
Thank you.
So I don't know how you want me to approach this. Do you want me to do a presentation?
If you would like to make a reasonably short presentation, I mean, we have everything required.
So the process is, this is a joint session with the cycle and the finance committee. And um if you, I would expect you to make a presentation, but beyond that, then the discussion and dialogue goes on. And that can also be directed, as as you've seen in previous meetings, you know, we might have a question for Angus, or the psych board might actually have a question, you know, another, so it becomes a little bit of a um more of a discussion than anything, but I would stop, given the complexity of what you're presenting, I would stop with a presentation. And as I started working on this, this is very complex. As we've seen, the planning board's been working on this for six, nine months, and doing quite a bit of a a good job with uh through the process. And then they decided, uh, based on advice, that uh they couldn't use the Mullins property, so they dropped that from consideration. But my reading of the um of the act, um, so what's that one, that's a forty, uh, by section three A of forty A, um, is that town properties are allowed as long as they're either were designated to be required to be affordable housing or for housing purposes, or that, excuse me, this is the town of West Newbury calling with you with a code red.
Really?
Yes, it is.
They just did me too, so.
So my board meeting.
But it disappeared, so I don't know where it's been.
Probably that.
Oh.
There's a watering, that happened a couple of hours ago.
Oh, okay.
You bring your wrenches, get to work.
So, um, I've since then, uh, sent an email to um the MBT housing people, which, I think Angus and you, when you've got copies of that, uh, came in today, where they won't apply on the disposition of property and properly refer that to town council. But they said that if we were to go forward, that they'd look forward to working with us under the MBTA initiative in order to um, you know, to get the MBTA initiative work through. And I want to give some credit to the rest of my proposal, Angus, who is probably one of the leading experts on forty R and suggested, look, maybe we could do forty R under this as well. Um, and there's the forty B aspect of it. In West Newbury, I believe we're at two, two and a half percent of the forty B requirements. And if you get to ten percent, uh, you no longer have to worry about forty Bs. Well, the way I'm trying to structure this, and I don't have, if if this goes through, the selectmen will have some control of the RFP process. But we can't have absolute control, but my goal would be to see this as about eighty, eighty-five single-bedroom uh apartments. Put on the Mullins property on, in buildings that look, that have a really true West Newbury character. I'd like to see them as three-story Federalist buildings with four units per floor. You know, we can't control that, but that's my vision. And in doing that, we'd be five more percent towards the forty B requirements. Um, and this, if you want me to go through the math on that, uh, forty R has twenty percent of true affordable housing, but a hundred percent of the units count towards our forty B requirements. So we get twenty percent uh true affordable housing. As single-bedroom units, I don't think they're gonna be very expensive. They will be the lowest-cost housing in town uh in all likelihood. And so even those that aren't affordable housing, the market rate is not gonna be that much higher um than affordable housing. So we provide housing for town employees, for our uh call firemen. Knowing the call firemen in West Newbury, most of them live out of town, um, or they're the younger guys, because they simply can't afford to live in West Newbury. And the same would be for the police officers, for our teachers. This would provide a starting place for someone to come in and enter into the West Newbury market. As well as for our seniors, who no longer want to take care of a four-bedroom house and only need one bedroom. Um, so that's my vision. How much that we have control over is, we get a lot more control, and we, planning board had a meeting earlier this uh week, this uh, this last week. Um, where the citizens were saying, well, what about, you know, we have no control with these um forty A, section three, uh MBTA community uh properties. But if we use the Mullins property, we have a lot more control. We don't have absolute control. But we control it through how we draft the RFP and how we do the zoning. And, you know, what the selectmen um accept on that. Now, there's a lot of logistical reasons why this is a very good choice. Um, Mullins property has access to Main Street and a really nice, clear uh access down on uh Church Street. Um, you've got water access through both sides, utilities can come in. Um, when we put this up for uh town meeting in, um, I think it was two thousand and eight. The proposal had septic there for ninety units. And ninety is kind of a special number. Anything over ninety, you have to really put a sewer treatment plant in, and it's a lot more expensive than a normal septic system. So we expect this to be about ninety units on that.
Ninety units or ninety bedrooms?
I'm equating ninety bedrooms, because I want one bedroom. My proposal's one bedroom. Uh, West Newbury has almost no one-bedroom units available in town. We've got uh Ocean Meadow and uh Falls, and a couple other places have two and three bedrooms, and the rest of the town is pretty much four and five-bedroom houses. So it's meeting a a need in the market that we just don't have. So, Rick, that that's something a mistake I'm gonna make all night long. Um, is equating that, because I'm I'm equating these as one-bedroom units.
Not, not all night long.
No. Yes, you've got a lot of others on this again. So let's look at the finances. Uh, in this proposal, I'm asking for a hundred thousand dollars for a consultant to prepare the RFP and prepare the uh forty R zoning. Now, I think a lot of the work that the planning board has done for the uh forty A, section three, MBTA communities work will be usable. They've done a great job on that, and that, I think, will will help go a long way to helping what we're trying to do and hopefully cut some of the costs down. Now, because it's a forty R, the state gives us a lot of incentives and they will pay us. Uh, any unit, I I, anything from about twenty to a hundred units, the state gives us an uh an incentive bonus of seventy-five thousand dollars, this cash payment to be used for anything for the for the town. In addition, three thousand dollars per unit, so you figure eighty, eighty-five units, that's another quarter million dollars. So we will get a cash payment when this is uh built of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the state. In addition, we're gonna sell the property. Now, my one number on this sheet that I'm not the regretted putting on there was two-point-five million dollars. I think that's a reasonable price if you go maximize what what you would want. But if we were to do any flyers on this, I would want to say something along the lines of a million dollars. Because I want the selectmen to have the flexibility to trade off um sale value for other intangibles, like how we want this laid out, how many units are gonna be in there. Um, so I'd say someplace between one and three million, and it just depends on what sort of deal, you know, the RFPs come in with, and you know, how restrictive we set that RFP. Um, and then additional, I figure about a hundred thousand a year in tax revenue when this is done. So. That's my quick summary. It's a very complex uh proposal, because it's hiring a consultant to get the zoning and the RFP right, and then authorize the selectmen to actually dispose of the property.
So what's your vision in terms of managing this RFP? Who would write it and manage the procurement?
I would hope the consultant would prepare the RFP, um.
I mean, I mean, for the consultant. I mean, the article is a hundred thousand dollars to hire a consultant. Somebody's gotta write the RFP for that.
Is that included in a hundred thousand dollars? Writing the RFP?
Well, yeah, it is, because.
And then executing, and then what else?
I haven't thought that far through, because I'm I'm honestly not familiar with the RFP process. Um, I kind of asked Angus what a good number was, and he handed on the hundred thousand dollars kind of appeared, and so.
Have you talked to any consultants that do this line work?
Only the top consultant in the country, uh, in the state, but he's currently employed, but it's not the West Newbury. And normally.
I used to do a lot of forty R consulting work. I was on the state regulation committee and and pretty involved with it for a number of years, but that was a long time ago. Um, that was, it's, I haven't done that since uh um, probably almost ten years, but there was a time that I was the state's leading expert on forty Rs.
And he's got a couple of uh papers written. And he's got a couple of papers written in, in leading, you know, bankers of trade and other places.
I guess what I'm getting at is town staff are really no available bandwidth right now. And so this is a pretty significant undertaking in terms of managing it and making sure that it meets the regulations and all of that. So I guess that's what I'm after. It's like, how is this actually going to be pulled off if the funding is approved?
And Wendy, part of what I think I heard you ask was, was not the RFP for the land, but that actually to engage the consultant. It's still at work.
That's a project.
Yeah.
And that's a valid concern, and I really don't have the experience of running this town to know how that's done.
Yeah, okay. Take four questions from the board first. Chris, Rick, do you have anything?
Well, you know, I guess, you know, my first sort of got response to development. Anywhere that's focused solely on single-bedroom units is not, it doesn't engender positive response from me. I don't see that as being, for West Newbury, as being part of a good long-term solution to our housing need. People might be single today, they might get married tomorrow, and they might have kids nine months later and be in need of housing. And what would they do? Would they then, would we then have single-bedroom units because people couldn't find housing within their cost range that now have two adults and one kid? A year or two later, two adults and two kids. I mean, I just don't know what kind of a, what kind of a neighborhood we would be, we would be putting together. And I don't see that heading in a good direction long term.
I will tell you that if there are any children in this unit, because it's a forty R, the state will take care, will pay the education. So we get a, an additional payment on the education.
I'm not concerned.
But I understand, yes, you're talking about, you know, what type of neighborhood does this create, right? And, you know, the hope is that, you know, we put town employees and, you know, seniors in there, but there's, you're right, there's no control on it. It's apartments and, you know, smaller units. And when you move beyond those single units, you would, you either you have to come up with a three-quarter million dollars to go into Ocean Meadow or or Follinsby, or you have to move out of town for a while until you can afford to.
Yeah, I have nothing against apartments and, you know, single people or married couples living in a single-bedroom apartment. I just, I have trouble envisioning in West Newbury how that fits in to the fabric of this town where you have a development of ninety units, and that's all it is.
Now, there is no, nothing in the warrant article that says it's single family, uh, single bedroom. That is my vision. That actually falls on you and how you draft the RFP. My goal on this was to maximize the forty B, the units towards forty B, which is single bedroom. You've got, you know, ninety bedrooms. There's nothing that says the select board can't say, we want this, all of the two bedrooms or fifty-fifty, or structure however you want within the confines of forty R and forty A, section three.
So I have a question. You know, this is going to town meeting floor. So this is one of those cases where we'll get to see whether you're gonna let it go to a warrant. It's going to a warrant, right? Angus, I'm a little bit confused. Don't we have some inkling of what we're going to try and build out in town? Isn't there some people working on this already? As far as how we might end up building additional housing? The planning board obviously has.
Affordable housing trust.
This is the plant production plan? Is that what you're?
Well, frankly, I've had people that have taken up the question to Rick's point of what might be additional housing in town that we could need. The planning board has done some. And the second part, second part of that is I'm absolutely unfamiliar with building out solely single-bedroom units. I mean, I don't know that, that's something that, I mean, if we're looking at state participation, I'm not.
I don't, I don't think they're going to go.
I don't think they're going to go for that.
Yeah, that's, and that's not something I had seen as part of the initial article request. And as I said, that's, you know, that's really not specified in there. But, yeah, the the state and forty R and really all of the policies that have adopted for many, many years, you know, have been explicitly against what was going to refer to as childproof. So that, that is not something that the state would.
Participate.
Yeah, or would allow. They, they had adopted, it was more than a decade ago, there was a the ECD had put out a mandate that in order for them to recognize affordable housing in any type of development, at least ten percent of the units had to be three-bedroom.
Right.
So that's kind of, and I've actually been trying to look at to see if I could find it in the regs. I can't find it quickly to know if there's a specific prohibition. Whether there is or there isn't. The forty R, just like the MBTA communities, there's a preapproval of the zoning where the state has to sign off on it before town meeting votes. And, and the bedroom count would be a big red flag.
Right. And anytime they're giving up their money, they have things in mind. And so my reaction to this is, my question, I know it's vague, Angus, but but I always presumed that we would look at Mullen property for some type of housing. I've always presumed that. But I've also thought that if we go there, we're going to want to be driving that bus. We have, we have the ability through forty R or through three A on other parcels to do what you're proposing. The property that we own that's most suitable for housing, we should be driving the bus. And what that means is that we would craft a lot of what, what, you know, you're kind of alluding to. We would craft it ourselves because we have the land. The land is incentive enough to get someone to come in and do the right thing. We would actually control what is built, whether we go to the state for money, the feds for money, or not. So to me, the Mullen property is the place that should be that thing that we take up as much on our own and much under our control specifically to what we want to accomplish. I think starter houses, underhouses, I think, one and two bedrooms. But, but the point is, is I, until we get further along, I just, I just can't see going anywhere with the Mullen property specifically.
Yeah. I think I, the email that we received today, I kind of view that as non-committal. I didn't view that as supporting this initiative. And the consultant who's working on the MBTA for the planning board said that, that they did not feel that the Mullen property was applicable, that we couldn't use it to satisfy the MBTA. So, I mean, I feel like we have to trust the experts on that. I mean, maybe the state will come back and say you can, but I guess the criteria is it has to be actively being pursued for housing, even if it's, you know, if it's town-owned. So the fact that in two thousand five or whenever it was, affordable housing was listed as one of the uses of the property wasn't solely affordable housing.
That's true.
I think would make it challenging to make that argument.
That, that's why I was pushing this forward.
Yeah.
Is just to show that the town wants, you know, is, is making that effort to dispose of the property for a housing.
Yeah. I mean, it is on the Affordable Housing Trust agenda. Maybe we'll talk about it, you know, almost every meeting about what our vision, but that's, that's kind of, we're brand new. We want to start with one unit first before we, you know, jump in and develop the Mullen property.
But I think that's the better way to proceed is between the planning board, the Affordable Housing Trust, or these other committees for them to pursue it rather than just throw everything into the wind and say, let's get an RFP. I think that's dangerous.
Well, also, I mean, practically speaking, you go to town meeting floor, which you're always at. And, and you know how defined things have to be. I mean, you know, you can't have things that are open questions that people are going to obviously ask. And, and so you say one bedroom, and then someone says, well, why is one bedroom the thing? Quite honestly, I don't think you would ever want to do just one bedroom. But, you know, this to me, I think is a a good reminder of where we want to go to. But I, 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 town meeting floor, I mean, we wouldn't even be able to describe what we're actually going to end up doing. That's my, my opinion on this. Yeah, no, I just wanted. We've got until December twenty twenty-five in order to do something with the MBTA initiative. And, you know, it could be, you know, planning board is pushing guns or nap properties. And, you know, to me, this is the best of the three options. And, you know, we just want to make sure we still have time to move this forward.
But look at, look at, compare your idea that you put forward. Again, good idea. But compared to what people have actually been able to see specifically by nap and done. So they're way far ahead. And my, my guess is we wouldn't even be able to get there even if we went through this town meeting cycle with what you went and looked at. Even though we can't really describe it.
We have the plans from two thousand eight and the drawings that are the same as what they're using for nap and done. And all three of them are concept plans. They have no basis in reality. A developer can do whatever they want, except we have more control over this. And my goal was just to do one big development on Main Street rather than two or three.
I might get a question and then a bunch of other questions or comments. You keep saying we. Are you involved with a group that is going to be pursuing this or is somebody pushing this?
No, I am doing this on my own. And when I say we, I mean the town of West Newbury. I'm hoping, you know, my hope has always been to get this started and to have some board, Affordable Housing Trust or Planning Board, or someone jump in and support it along. You know, I, I really don't want to be running this on my own. I've got, you know, my own job and stuff to work on.
Well, and again, I'll go back to what you said, Affordable Housing Trust, planning board. I think in the right timeframe, they can address it. I think unfortunately, it won't comply with the MBTA because the town owns it. That has to be independently owned property, from my understanding.
Right. Look at the regulations.
You have to take this and make it available for their housing. Well, with the timeframe of the MBTA, I, I think there's a problem with that. My other question, and you stated the previous development, said they could put eighty units on that property with septic without a package plan.
Correct.
I, if you've walked that property, I don't know how that is.
The septic is down by Church Street. There's a rise down there.
It's almost all wet.
If you, if you go out there a week after it's raining, you're not going to be standing up after you walk five minutes. So it's one of the wettest parcels I've ever seen. So I would just question that in the long run. Hope somebody, before you even get to the article, puts some money into exploring that.
Right. We talked to Paul, and he referred back to the previous work that was done in LA.
Yeah, wetlands have to be redelineated every three years, so.
Even the wetlands component, but just the soil is so wet. And then the other comment, I guess, you said the state would pay the education component. I think that's a pretty bold statement. I don't know how they can do that because to educate each kid.
They pay a certain amount.
Right, a certain amount.
So it's, you know, chapter forty S was adopted two years after forty R. It was part of the initial idea, but the legislature cut it out because they didn't know what it would cost. What it does is it sets up a provision that within an established forty R community, that if you adopt a forty R, you have to do annual reporting to the state. There's how many units, bedroom count, all of that. And you have to do a census of the number of actual school kids. And then they calculate an education percentage. Basically, they look at the proportion of your tax revenue that's paid toward education. They apply the actual property tax from that development, apply that percentage, and if the actual education costs based on actual student enrollment exceed what, you know, that proportion of the developer's tax revenue is, they are supposed to reimburse you under forty S as your, part of your charity adjustment. Chapter forty S, just like the incentives in forty R are subject to appropriation. So that's something that's, there's been a lot of question over the years in different communities. In practice, there, my understanding, and it's been ten years since I was supposedly involved, but I have heard anecdotally this, there have been payments under forty S, but there've been very, very few. So I'm not saying that to say it's good or it's not good, but just factual, that's what I know of it.
It sounds sort of like they cover our transportation costs.
Yeah, I was going to say, the state pulled back the funds on those schools so bad already, I can't see them tossing a lot of money at business.
But, but, you know, the burden's on the town to document the education costs and how those related property taxes generated by the development.
Any other questions, Chris?
I'm good.
I have a question. So Rich, I just want to say I applaud your initiative and I applaud your vision. And my question is, have you worked directly with the planning board in the Affordable Housing Trust group? And if so, what was their reaction?
The planning board, I've been to probably sixty percent of their meetings in the last six months as this has been going through. We've gone to the open houses where we, the consultants, where they were working through various proposals. Affordable Housing Trust, I've been, I think I've gone to every meeting this year because there's only been one. But I haven't been able to present it yet.
No, he's on the agenda for April. We didn't have a meeting in March, which he was going to be on.
So, you know, I've been trying to get in front of these boards and get, get support from some of these town boards.
And that makes sense. Okay. That's curious. Okay, thanks.
So is this something you, the comms, going to take a position on?
Oh, sure. This has money attached to it, so we're actually legally bound to do that.
Okay, then.
So when you hear everybody's feedback about the issues that, or at least the the opinion that, you know, people here have about single units or single-bedroom units, does that change your perspective? Or are you still going to pursue this?
I'm still pursuing. There is nothing in the warrant article that says it's single bedroom.
Confines it to that, but if you went away from that, would it fall apart?
No. It just means that our forty B, how it helps us on forty B decreases as the number of units goes down.
But at what point would it, what's the threshold for MBTA? Because that's the primary thing to try and solve, right, is MBTA.
Right.
Is there a threshold for that?
It's density of, it's how many, it's fifteen units per acre, I think, for West Newbury.
Eighty-seven total.
Yeah, and we can, what was?
Eighty-seven total.
Eighty-seven total, which this property will, well.
Only if you go single bedroom.
Yeah. But if the planning board chose either one, either Mullen or, I mean, not Mullen, nap or done, they don't get there either. They're only, both, they figure both of those would be about four units.
But the zoning would support.
Right. And the zoning on this as well would support as many units as they can get for septic.
I mean, it's obviously very complicated. It seems a little bit, even though you're trying very hard, it seems a little bit undeveloped, you know, conceptually. It just, it's probably going to be a topic at a town meeting that's going to be a little cumbersome to debate. But, you know, maybe the solution isn't trying to hit the threshold of one property. I mean, all or nothing is a lot, but, you know, maybe it makes sense to just get a little bit closer, you know, and not do the single. I don't know. But that's just my, you know, not to turn your whole proposal off its head, but.
But that, the way this, the warrant article was structured stayed away from, from my vision.
Right.
And it does wind up in the, in the hands of town boards on, you know, what the RFP says. And the RFP can, based on what Angus is saying, it really should say certain number of three, certain number of two, and certain number of one bedroom units.
And it's not another intended use for this parcel. It's just the timing isn't really the way that the town vision is.
The vision is to use it for housing, but we're just not there yet.
Again, a number of years ago, they tried, and it was a whole different process, and it sort of failed. And we talked a number of times about what a perfect parcel. It's got great location, and this was a sort of intended use, but. And I love the fact that you're bringing it forward, Rich, because I just think it's, it's kind of premature. I would like to have seen either the planning board or the Affordable Housing Trust work together with you, come forward in a, in a timeframe with a little more information.
I'm trying.
I mean, I don't want to see it put down in flames at town meeting, but I think that's where it is if you go there.
I'm curious about, um, how, you know, sort of the interaction between MBTA communities and a. Because, um, you know, the MBT, MBTA communities, um, act, they're supposed to construct um, mixed housing, which would include family friendly housing and, and, um.
Are we, are we complaining the two things, forty R and three A?
Yeah.
That's, that's a question I have.
I just don't know.
Angus, what are we looking at here? Is it forty R or the three A?
Well.
It's being proposed as satisfying as being, but it's forty.
But we can't.
Yeah, if, if this was a private parcel, it, it would probably fly, but because it's public and we're not far enough along in the process, I'm not sure that it's going to satisfy MBTA.
Yeah.
But I think that I'm, I'm on the planning board and has been there, but we really haven't delved into it. But Dash and Flinper have done extensive study, that was our consultants who put together the proposal for Nap and Dunn. And theoretically, we are also looking at whether to push forward on one or both of those properties so that you could build fewer units on both parcels. I love Mullen and I, and I hope that your vision for one and two bedroom units comes to be. Um, but it did not qualify for the MBTA program, according to Dash and Flinper, who have done this work in a lot of other towns. They're arguably, you know, experts in, in helping towns to meet the MBTA requirements.
Do I have any further questions here?
Again, maybe just one for all of us that were, what was knowledgeable. I know when we went to the planning board here, honestly, ninety percent of the pushback was from abutters. So my question is, is that, does the, does this property have an equal amount of abutters? Is there a lot of people that live around there? Are we going to get a similar kind of pushback? Or is this kind of bringing a clear area?
I mean, that's why I failed before.
I failed you before, it was because of the abutters.
Yeah, yeah, it's near the original purchase was the abutters were all four behind the land. And then as soon as it was going to be affordable housing, there were nobody that was.
But that's the way it is on a lot, anything, I was on, anything comes in, it could be a five lot subdivision, the neighbors all say no. You know, so the thing is, if you're really that opposed to it, you should purchase something and yourself. So, I mean, the neighbors should have reasonable concerns. And the parties, whether it's the planning board or the consultant of the state, should address those, you know, right? Shielding from lights and traffic and, and, you know, runoff onto their properties and things like that. But you'll always have abutters, including.
Right, but, 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 like you said, you gotta have the answers. In this case, we couldn't even describe where, where we're going. That's my biggest trepidation, without describing where you're going, it would be hard to, for me to support this, this type of proposal. I think we should be ending up at Mullen in some way.
No, I think it should be a feasibility study.
I, I think we need more prep work for this and, and so that's, that's my opinion. I think it's a great idea. I think we need more prep work. And I kind of think that that's where we're headed, just like we've got to get over some humps that we have right now, like Mill Street Bridge, like some other things, Newport asking for some sort of access to some of our land, et cetera. So, you know, that's where I would hopefully would end up on this. And I think we should consider whether the time is.
Especially if it doesn't be MBTA, right, that's.
But the, the state law and the email I got, for me, reads that it does, that it would be fine and they'd be willing to work with us.
It says, should it be shown to be compatible, we look forward to work with you, or something like that. It wasn't.
That's a nice leeway to put it.
Yes, I do.
So what, what happens in actually reading?
Thank you for reaching out to.
Yeah, I mean, not the whole thing, which is the, what you saw outside.
Uh, we cannot specifically opine on the attached citizens petition or local disposition process at this time. Uh, instead recommend having that conversation with town council. However, if this site is to be disposed and rezoned for multifamily housing, we look forward to working with West Newbury officials to make sure that the process allows the land to qualify towards compliance to MGL forty A, uh, forty, yeah, forty A, section three A.
So first it would have to be disposed of and zoned, so, yeah, that's.
Which is quite with, with the whole point of the warrant. Yeah, but disposing of it is going to let you run out several months. I mean, you, so I, I think actually a timeframe for three A collapses if you have to go through a whole process of getting to the point where you can dispose of it. So, I mean, I, I, I think we should, I mean, we have other people and other things to go through. And Rich, just, you know, you have to bear with us on that, where this has been, this has been a really rough cycle from my point of view. But in any event, um, are you guys at all ready?
Yes.
If I could just add one final kind of a question, I scratched my head about, and I didn't find the, the state's email. Answer the question is, at what stage would they recognize town owned land as having went far enough along? I think a vote to town meeting to authorize disposition would absolutely be necessary. But I doubt, I doubt very, very much that it would be enough. I would think the state would need to see that our fee had been issued, perhaps even that a purchase and sale had been entered. Like they are going to want to see absolutely that the town, that it's actually in fact available for development, so.
So, so that extends probably to my point, it probably extends the length of time of even getting to the place where we can then describe what, what, what we want to happen to the land. But, but I think it also speaks to not an abduction of all, these are things that we can't answer now, we're not going to be able to answer on town meeting board. So I, I think you guys should vote and I will. Look, you know, it's going to take the eighteen months that we have, or twenty months between now and December twenty twenty five to work through all of this.
Yeah, so the, the issue is, you know, the select board has, uh, priorities for the next five years. And Mullen is on there, but it's very far down, so this is, we can't drop everything else to work on this right now.
Sorry, vote right again.
Yeah. So, anyway.
Can I ask you a fresh one, Earl?
Yeah, um, uh, so the question is whether or not we will report this to, uh.
No.
No, no, it's.
Be supported or not.
Yeah, okay, so I, you know, I, I personally, you know, I cannot, um, at this point, um, and, uh, um, so I guess we need a motion. Yeah, I've moved to, if it's like for not support, um, this, um, the suggestion of, uh, uh, a forty R on Mullen property.
Second that.
Right, on favor, motion to not support.
Aye.
So Finn, uh, is there a motion on this, uh, warrant article? I would make a motion that we, uh, recommend a no vote on town meeting floor to this one. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll say.
Any more discussion?
Thank you. I'd like to consider, appreciate the issue. This is obviously a learned problem to, you know, to be an individual and try and solve for now, but appreciate it.
Well done.
Yeah, I, I also, I want to piggyback on Ross, just that I, I, and you just said earlier, I do think this is the right spot. And I just wish that all these unanswered questions were answered before going to town meeting floor. Because I think this is going to be whipped up pretty badly in town meeting floor. So I, I would, normally I would, I would just say, I would, I love this idea, but I just think it needs more vetting.
Right, you're on to something, but it's not quite, kind of, so, um, on favor of the motion, right? James, on favor of the motion to make a no recommendation on town meeting floor? Can she dance?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Rich, thanks, thanks for the thought process, you know, and, and we, we need to do something with that property, something productive with it. Because the town wanted to do something to have to work. Um, but, yeah, I think we all agree that the town, yeah, just, yeah, like.
Yeah, keep it moving at full.
Yeah, it was on the Affordable Housing Trust agenda a couple of weeks.
And, and Quinny, I hope I'm still on the agenda.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, yes, right, right.
All right, the next is Article sixty-three, citizens petition, home rule petition to reduce the voting age to sixteen. Sorry to make you all wait through that whole discussion. You could just introduce yourself and give us some background.
Uh, do we have the presentation slides?
We do.
Hold up. Help the petition. Oh, I don't know what's about to happen, sorry. I don't.
Is that something we have to, that we can follow, Jim? Who, did you send most of the town clerk?
I sent, I think it's in there, I think it's in there.
It is in the packet, yeah. Right, it's on page, uh, well, twenty-seven, so it starts on twenty-five or something. Oh, no, it's in the, the, um, packet or the, or wait, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong petition, I'm sorry.
Weird, I got it, I think page fifty-two, page fifty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, fifty-one and fifty-two it starts.
On the current packet?
Yeah, the one that I think is sent out for the weekend.
I, I don't have that.
Yeah, that's MBTA.
Fifty-one of seventy-one.
That's just there.
I didn't see. West Newbury Power Act, so, yeah, I'm on page fifty-three.
You've gone.
Yeah, it's page fifty-three, fifty-four.
Yes, we have the article, but not the presentation.
Oh. Okay.
Do you have it in your email, Jim?
Yeah, last email I sent to Angus is on it.
Oh, okay. Just bear with us, sorry, a little technical difference. Jim, screen.
Yeah, come on, I'm going to carry it.
Make sure you have it. We shall pass, we're talking. I hate my job.
No problem. I'm happy to present without the slide as well, that's easier.
See how it does, give them like, one minute, it works well on the pressure.
So are we disconnected from the recording and everything?
You have to file an email to me about the question. I'll just look, look forward and hopefully I didn't.
Okay, sure, thank you. All right, well, thank you so much for having me here today. My name's David Seaton, I live on one twelve Cranix Street. Um, and I have been a Westernburg resident for my entire life. Uh, I remember when I was, you know, very young, from as long as I can remember back, uh, I went with my parents to the annex to vote and I saw how they contributed to our democracy through voting. And at the age of sixteen, I knew it was time to do my part. So I rode my bike down to Jim's office on my birthday and I, uh, pre-registered to vote and I, I registered to be a poll worker so I can help run our elections. Because in Massachusetts, at the age of sixteen, we trust citizens with the ability to run our elections in part, even though we don't trust them to cast a single vote. And as I was working at my first election and, you know, a few years ago, I just felt like this was very inconsistent. So I took action and I proposed this article to lower the voting age in town elections from eighteen to sixteen. So this is not without precedent. In our state, uh, ten municipalities so far, including the city of Boston, Cambridge and, uh, South Borough, I believe, have taken a measure to, have taken up and passed measures to lower the voting age from eighteen to sixteen. And this is also consistent that the nations from Brazil to Germany to Austria, who have passed this nationally and they've seen positive results, uh, so far. Next slide. But perhaps the most common argument against letting sixteen and seventeen year olds vote is that, you know, our brains are not fully developed until we're in our mid twenties. And this is partially true because the area of our brain that is responsible for making decisions under what is called hot cognition, um, does not develop until roughly the mid twenties. And hot cognition is the ability to make a decision about one's personal safety under high peer pressure, uh, with like high social, you know, pressure. But this is a very different kind of decision from the ability to make a voting decision in a private setting in a ballot box, where there is no peer pressure by definition. And, you know, someone is not being pressured to vote a certain way. And this is what's called cold cognition. And as Jean Piaget, one of the most well-known psychologists in the world argues, uh, this ability to make decisions under what is called cold cognition is firmly in the place by the time someone turns sixteen. Next slide. So in West Newbury, if this measure were to be approved in our town, first sixteen and seventeen year olds would be able to vote at town meeting, uh, allowing us to vote on town bylaws, the budget and whatever else comes to the board. But also have the ability to vote in town elections, electing select board members and other town officials. And something else I'm asking you to do tonight that is on the petition, but is not, uh, doesn't have to be approved at town meeting, is change your select board rules to allow a sixteen year old or seventeen year old to be appointed to a town physician if this person qualifies for a serving job. Again, this does not have to be approved at town meetings, this is a viewer select board rule and you can change that tonight if you so choose. So in conclusion, in just a few short years, sixteen and seventeen year olds of West Newbury will be responsible for running this town and we will be sitting in the seats of those who currently sit around these tables. I'm asking you to take a step to make sure that when that day comes, my generation is in a position where we are, where we are responsible and capable to take that responsibility on them. I kindly urge you to support my citizens petition to lower the voting age in West Newbury town elections from eighteen to sixteen. Again, thank you for having me and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have at this time.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
So is this part of a statewide initiative or is this something you?
So again, a, a bunch of towns in Massachusetts, ten towns right now pass similar measures, but this is not part of a larger statewide, yeah.
Any questions?
I was gonna say, um, I don't think you're more than sixteen, you stated that. Whatever your age is, very impressive and you're not the normal average kid of your age. I kind of frightened myself till I was about thirty, I mean, you know, most males take a lot longer to develop. Um, but that's not the point. My contention would be, as a property owner, um, who pays a significant portion, uh, to a tax bill, you've got a little bit of skin in the game. So to have high school kids who might have a whole different perspective or even a, a need or a want that they could control at town meeting without having, um, the debt on the other side of that is a concern to me. So, um, like I say, you've been able to convince me that you would be very capable of voting and hopefully sitting up here on one of these tables sometime in the near future. But you're the more than, uh, abnormal, I think.
I think I can speak to your concern about property taxes. Um, you know, there are a lot of residents of West Newbury that are able to vote and don't pay property taxes. Someone who's eighteen years old, who maybe goes to college and lives with their parents, is not directly paying property taxes. And still we trust them to be able to vote. We trust them to be responsible decision makers in our town. We trust them to be responsible decision makers in our town. Uh, and, you know, that goes for someone who might rent out and I think if we're using that as our standard for who qualifies as a, you know, a qualified voter, a responsible voter, I think a lot more people could be, you know, cut out of the political process.
Thank you. I have a question. So you referred to ten communities, but isn't this all a, a home rule petition? Doesn't this go to the legislature?
Yes, this would go to the legislature, um, and in these ten communities, the state legislature has not acted on them yet. In twenty twenty, this measure was taken up, uh, well, a measure in the state legislature was taken up to grant these towns that have approved citizen petitions in the past to lower the voting age. Uh, but this was in March in twenty twenty and, you know, we all know what happened then. And the COVID nineteen pandemic kind of delayed everything, but if this were approved, we would add to the ten towns and cities that have approved this. And our petition would go to the legislature and they would be able to take this measure up and grant us the permission to lower the voting age if they so choose.
And what's Galvin's position on this?
I, I'm not sure. Um, I, I know I have received support from Congressman Moulton, uh, I have written support, his endorsement.
I'm just wondering about the, uh, Galvin has a particular requirements of his job, Jim, do you know what his position has in research?
I, I don't know what the, the secretary's position is, but in, in the sense of administering this locally, it'd be no different from having what we call confidential voter, so anyone in the age of eighteen essentially would be considered a confidential voter if they so chose to enroll because they can't share information of children under a certain age, um, so if somebody ever asks for that information. Um, it wouldn't be any different from that if it was somebody who was under, uh, court protection or anything like that, so administering an election wouldn't be that much harder.
And what, how did you choose the ages of sixteen and seventeen versus just seventeen?
I know that this has been the standard in other towns in Massachusetts that have passed this, other countries including Austria, which I think we've seen the longest, um, time since they passed this matter. And there's been the most research done on sixteen seventeen year olds, uh, and their ability to vote. So that's where I, that's kind of where this idea came from, I know in Maryland, there's three towns that have actually implemented this at the, at the local level and they have seen positive results as well. Um, and also, you know, what I was saying about cold cognition, that ability to make an academic decision, like filling out a the correct answer on a test or, you know, doing anything in an academic low pressure setting is firmly in place by the age of sixteen. That's why I, so I'm settled at that age.
Is it in place, like, lower than sixteen?
In some cases, yeah, but I think sixteen is a, is a safe bet that you're gonna have, someone's abilities to make that kind of decision in place.
Well, my, my feelings on the subject are you are way more responsible and put together than I was when I was your age. I wouldn't want my opinion when I was sixteen. Yeah, I understand your point about, you know, there's eighteen year olds that might live in an apartment, but there, there's thirty year olds that might live in, you have to, you have to draw the line somewhere. You know, reasonably, uh, and, and my feeling on the, on the matter that you have to pick an age where the people are facing the realities of life, you know, not necessarily on average living with their parents, not working full time, not paying a mortgage, not paying rent, not paying utilities, um, that's just what I was thinking about this article and again, I feel like, in order to really understand the economy and, um, the, uh, you know, the community that we're in, I have to be a little more independent, so.
So, uh, mind if I speak to that for just a second? I just, I, I understand that we do have to set the bar at a certain age, uh, I'm just arguing that the bar is sixteen. Um, you know, we allow someone to get a driver's license at sixteen and drive safely on our roads, we allow someone, as I said at the beginning, to work at a poll, work, you know, running our elections. And we don't trust these people to be able to cast a single ballot, I feel like that's inconsistent.
I want to weigh in, I, I, um. I believe it would be very refreshing to see, um, some high school faces that are sixteen and seventeen year old at our town meeting, I do think there's a, a level of understanding and maturity that can make a, a reasoned vote. And I, I think getting young people into the political process sooner is, is going to be a positive future development, that's my personal view. And, and so I, I will vote in favor of this and I applaud you David and your friends and colleagues here to, to make this effort, to go to this degree of, of effort to try to get this on the ballot, to me is remarkable. So I just want to give you my support.
Yeah, I guess I would sort of compliment what Jim said in that, um, it strikes me, you know, particularly where we are in, where we are in the world right now, where the world is right now, that, um, uh, older generations are making decisions that, um, are absolutely going to control the world in a way never done before and, and never experienced before. And I think it's important that, um, that youth be engaged as much as possible because, um, speaking from my generation, we haven't done a great job, I mean, I'd like to think that each of us here is doing the best we can, but overall, we haven't done a great job, so I think the more we engage the younger generation so that they can participate in the decision-making for their future, that, that is important.
Right, you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh, that the select board to, um, support this at, at town meeting.
One second, any further discussion on paper?
Aye.
Or opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Yeah, Chris, I, was that?
Thank you.
Now, we have something to decide before we can tell people what it is and our personal feelings on it. So the question is, as we've seen in other articles, is this within our lane or not? If it's not within our lane, whether you like it or don't like it, it has to be consistent. So is this in our lane or not, that's the first thing we should attempt to resolve. I don't think this is.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, like anything, you could draw an indirect line to finances, but I wouldn't say it's indirect.
Yeah, we've, 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 we've agreed that we're not going to go out of our way to draw that fine line.
Yeah, I agree.
So. Any more discussion on this question?
I just want to make one comment to, uh, what Rick said, I think that you guys' generation did a good job, actually. I know that things are a little bit, you know, tenuous right now, but I mean, seriously, the wealth graph gap has shrunk significantly, um, I mean, um, average life expectancy has grown significantly. So we've come a long way, uh, over the last hundred years, not that you've been alive in the past years. But seriously, I think, you know, you're never at the finish point, obviously now we're three and some other things we've got to deal with, but I just.
A lot of things to deal with, but to what you just said, I actually have an article I can send any of you that will point out how much better we are than what we hear every day, so in any regards, so where are we at?
So.
Motion to take no action?
Yeah, Chris, Jim.
I know, I hear you, I, I, I don't disagree with that, I.
You can, you can speak to it on town meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
You want to explain?
Yeah, so, so where we've resolved to not weigh in on stuff, that is stuff that we wouldn't be trying to be taking up as a.
Fascinating.
Yeah, so, so this doesn't actually reflect on anything that you said or anything that you presented. But it would appear that this is similar to some others where we've said this is not in our lane. And we don't want to speak to it because we feel like we would just be using our position on FinCon when we, we should be doing is standing up and speaking to it at town meetings, individual members of the community. Fair enough, okay, so, so we're, we're not going to take this up, but well done, thank you, and by the way, I was working in the poll while I was in sixth grade. Yes, I was checking voters for the Democratic Party. So you want me to go there and we, we did very well that year. Remarkably well, we let a lot, a couple of Republicans get elected, no offense.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
Okay, Article Three, school stabilization fund transfer?
Uh, so the, uh, the amount we've put into the, um, proposal is two hundred thousand, that's the same that it was in the current year. Uh, those of you who've been around a couple of cycles know that there is a kind of a model showing a multi-year drawdown, I, I didn't get a chance to update that to show kind of the graph, so the best I can tell you is it's the same as the, um, the current year.
Well, it had been three seventy-five and I think last year we decided to split it to.
That's exactly right.
Stepping down.
Yeah, yeah.
But how long does this thing go on? I mean, so if we're no longer offsetting anything, why aren't we just taking it off? This, I, I don't know this, I.
I think, I think it's to wean the tax rate off of.
So you don't get punched in the head to her.
No, no, but, but.
Right, because if you take.
Are we still offsetting something?
Well, yeah, the middle high school.
High school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the effort's been to kind of taper it down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we don't see it. Doing it for the next twenty years.
Do it for the next twenty years, we don't have that much money, do we?
No, we'll be paying for the high.
We'll be paying for it for, for.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so this will be asymptomatic with zero, so.
So do we know the balance?
In years to come, we're gonna be contributing ten dollars.
Two, so another three years, each year, two more years, if we keep it at the same rate.
Yeah.
And so would we ever contribute more money to the stabilization fund?
Or to, I think it talks in here about the Whittier thing.
Right.
It might not be a bad idea because we know they're coming with a project to start somehow funding that, even if this account is been targeted for Kentucky, it's an educational account, so.
It's a great idea.
And Wendy, to your point, I mean, ideally, yeah, you would, but practically speaking, we've got other uses of free cash that are going on right now and so I think we should look at Whittier. My suspicion is we don't have a wherewithal to, to weigh in on, on the, the middle high school, I, I, I just think that we've got other needs for, for free cash and including, you know, upcoming discussions on reducing the tax rate and we increased the pension this year, so.
It's gonna come back to that free cash and stabilization.
Yeah.
Number.
Yeah, that dance that we're doing around, you know, how much, how much are you, are you putting in, how much you drawing down, how much you spreading out.
Well, once we find out how much those numbers should be, if it becomes a year when there's an excess, this would be a really great place to play.
Exactly, like, like the year that, that you came out of, uh, uh, wanting for the public safety building was, was, I think, the year that precipitated, hey, let's put it aside, yes, cool, it's just, it's, it's hard to provide relief for all expenditures you're gonna make in the future.
I think, I think actually it's impossible.
I think it's impossible, thank you.
No, but this is something that voters understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Gonna make a motion to support Article Three, put two hundred thousand dollars into the, uh, school stabilization fund.
No, it's to take it out.
Use it to pay the taxes.
Second.
All right, ready for the discussion? All in favor?
Okay, FinCon, so, uh, by the way, going back to, uh, citizens petition forty R. Um, we're gonna have to write something on that because we're writing it down, so I'll, I'll offer to write that. Because it's not an elevator or a truck or something. Okay, so anyways, um, any more, do, do, do we have a motion on the?
I have a motion to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from the, uh, school stabilization.
Second, and any more discussion? All in favor, unanimous, correct? Unanimous, I'm not saying the right spot, I see everybody. And who wants to do that? Who wants to write about continuing a policy that's been in place for several years?
I'll have to pay some last year.
Yeah, kind of an open range, I was, yeah, I was actually thinking Dennis would say I'll do that because then you can tell him how to do that type of thing. But, okay, who's doing it?
I am.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You don't, you don't have to pay, sorry.
Done it once before.
With the Mimian Wrap Machine?
All right, all right. All right, Article Five, um, this is the free cash to offset the F Y twenty-five tax rate.
Yep.
So can you just explain the timing of why we usually do this in fall and why are you proposing it now?
Yes, so, uh, it's historically been done in the fall, uh, at that point, we have more information on things like assessed values and new growth, um, and we're closer to making the projections of non-tax revenues, although that doesn't end up being as big a factor because there's no change a whole lot, that, uh, the biggest factor on the, um, uh, next year's tax rate that we don't know at this time is the assessed values and the new growth. And we don't have those numbers certified by the fall town meeting, but we usually have a pretty good idea by then. Uh, so that helps us estimate what the tax rate is gonna be, which translates, uh, with the assessed values to what the typical tax bill is gonna be. So prior boards have often had a target in mind in terms of they don't want taxes to go up more than such and such, uh. So in the fall, we're with a striking range of that, I think when, when this article was, uh, taken off for the fall town meeting, um, I think the idea was to put something on for the spring, even if it doesn't end up happening, just to get the conversation started sooner. So when we put it in, in late January, early February, uh, we put just the TBD amount and really the idea was, at that point, was kind of tax relief, uh, uh, now that the capital improvements committee has made a recommendation to increase the amount into stabilization by two hundred thousand, it came up at the meeting two weeks ago that that could be accomplished without resulting in a big hit to the taxpayer, in fact, without resulting in any hits to the taxpayer if the same amount was drawn from free cash, so that's where I penciled in two hundred thousand based on that theory. Uh, at, at tonight's meeting, you know, uh, uh, I think we chatted off for tonight for transfers into and out of stabilization, I think it'd be great for both of those on the table, do you want to increase the amount into capital stabilization from six hundred to eight hundred? And if so, do you want to offset that by two hundred from free cash, uh, to make a, uh?
Oh, you mean as opposed to, or, as opposed to raising?
Correct.
As opposed to raising two hundred to free cash in our stabilization, which is a discussion.
Yeah.
Discussion we've been having for several years.
Yeah, raise an appropriate six hundred and then two hundred.
Right.
So that's one set of questions, that wouldn't be mutually exclusive of also transferring a larger amount for tax relief, but that's a different discussion.
So which discussion are we doing right now?
Well, the number I put in is two hundred based on the idea that the, uh, transfer into stabilization would be increased by two hundred.
So they're the same thing, that's what, what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Not to reduce the tax rates, to move it into stabilization.
That, that's, that's what's on the table, yeah. But that doesn't limit what you guys could do, or really it's the select boards, uh, is what you want to propose and then it's what Big Town wants for the brand.
And then, but related to that, because this is, this is really kind of important, um. In a way, you don't have to wait until the fall to find out how much you're gonna ask people to pay more on their taxes, you can kind of look at an increase in operating budget to tell you the same thing. You can, it'll approximately be about the same, there, all, all the, you know, the valuations and the new stuff can, can moderate it a little bit, but if you're gonna raise five percent more from the operating budget, you're, you should expect your tax bill to go up by five percent.
Yes.
To me, to me, the, the issues being raised here are stuff we should resolve this week and goes like what Angus just said, so we have free cash at the end of last year, two point three million. And, and we, and, and we also know that, that the so-called turnbacks uh, can be something in the nature of three or four hundred thousand.
Four or more.
Yeah, four or more, but I'm just trying to be conservative, you know, so, so in other, so in, in other words, um, this may be the year, in my mind, to discuss doing something we haven't really discussed in prior years, which is be a little more aggressive about the use of free cash such that we keep in mind the four hundred that comes out, uh, of, of the, the turnbacks. We keep in mind the fact that we, um, do want to add to the stabilization fund. but if you, if you're gonna add, if, if, if the math were two point three plus four hundred, that's two point seven, two hundred over stabilization, that still gives you like five hundred to, to think about how, how you might, how you might be applying that. And you have to look to all the other warrant articles that are pulling money out of free cash.
Where'd you get the number five hundred from? I, I, I'm just trying to follow all the logic and these.
If, if, if you have two point three, you add four hundred, that's two point seven, then if you move two out.
Yeah, so five, so two million is in that, is around, is a, I, I'm just, I don't know.
Where two million comes from?
Is that the number you're trying to keep?
That's the question, that's always gonna be the question.
Oh, okay, I just, I just didn't know how you arrived at that particular.
Oh, oh, I, I think that last year we could have done two hundred and fifty and we would have ended up at two point oh five. I mean, you know, to me, two million doesn't press the panic button.
Not at all.
Right, exactly, so that's, that's all, I'm just, this is the nature of the discussion we have to have, I know it's difficult, but it, it seems to me that where we're at, I would think last year, overall, the operating budget, Angus, was up like four point seven or something. The operating, well, just, okay, just for sake of discussion, I think we need to not exceed last year, because last year was a high year. I think we've got to be thinking, making, where, in some cases, making numbers work would be making sure we don't approve some stuff, but also the use of free cash this one time to, to, to keep them at a rate that is more palatable to the taxpayer.
We don't quite know where that number's gonna be yet, because we haven't approved all the.
No, we haven't, but, but that, that's the moving target, so, so I think we gotta keep it on, on my.
It could be three or four hundred thousand.
Off the top of my head.
If we don't have the numbers.
Three point eight last year.
Three point eight percent.
Yeah, so now we're at four, four point six something.
So the only reason why we would do it now, Angus, is to offset the capital.
And that, that's, I, I think if you're going to increase the amount into stabilization, I, I definitely recommend drawing on free cash, because I, I just don't think it would be good to.
To raise it.
Jack up.
Yeah, you can't raise it, but, but the second part of that is you can still have twelve discussions.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't preclude doing something.
Most towns, a lot of towns will in fact do it at the spring town meeting. That's when they actually do, they don't really feel they have to wait, because quite honestly, you should be in a position of able to roll numbers forward. So I'm just saying, let's, let's keep in mind, I love the idea of free cash to stabilization, but I think we've got to keep in mind that depending on how things fall out, you, you, you have to, you know, wonder how much you want to do right now, how much you want to be talking about right now, and I think we would want to reduce it, because we went to two, three last year, and there's always, like Angus says, there's some three or four hundred of turnbacks. It's been higher in the past, Angus, I'm just kind of fucking it now, because, you know, we, we had some discussions, we've cut back on a couple of items, and so it may not be as robust as within our.
But stabilization is gonna drop, we're buying a fire engine, a dump truck, and so that's gonna be them.
But, but the years, it's not gonna go up too, so keep that in mind.
Right, but the free cash isn't gonna flip all over today to support that. Theoretically, you could have said, we're gonna spend free cash to buy the, you know.
Yeah.
It's just wooden pockets, they're coming out.
Exactly, it's always about pockets.
So you've got to figure out where the stabilization is gonna end up.
To Rick's observation, that there is a point at which you wouldn't want to go below.
And that's what I'm asking, go both accounts, not one, both.
Well, yeah, so, so if we were to look back, I, I know you've had these numbers displayed before, Angus, I don't know how readily available they are, but say the last five years.
We've got, you've got it right in it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's in the packet.
Yeah.
One point seven, I think, was low, if it went to.
Does anybody know roughly what Paige is at?
Yeah, sixty and sixty-one, I think.
Okay, thank you.
So, so the Pinkham packet. And then the other thing I have up here, which, which was not in your packet, it was shared back in, I think, in a very much earlier in the process, and it'll be part of what you have for this Wednesday's meeting, but this is the working draft of the sources for all of the articles that are in front of you right now, in terms of where I have them penciled in for what they, whether the free cash, stabilization, so forth.
Excellent.
And we're seeing this for Wednesday, right?
Yeah, this will be in the packet, I, I wanted to wait to see what.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but yeah, this will be in the packet for Wednesday. So, and this assumes everything passes at the number that's in here. So everything shaded in yellow is my way of just a reminder that that, in my mind, is still a moving target. But right now, we have eight hundred and eight thousand dollars of free cash of articles, one point three million of stabilization, two hundred school stabilization, CPA, and then water and others, just things like the cable advisory.
You're saying that's the amount that we're looking to expend, not the balances?
Correct.
My question would have been about the balances, because the other issue, which we're getting to a Wednesday, or maybe tonight, I'm not sure, is the bridge.
Yes.
And that's a big ticket, unknown, scary item.
We can have that on the stage here.
Yeah, yeah.
So should we defer this discussion until?
I think so, I think so, I think, I think we need, Angus, I, I think this is a.
I'm good with that.
You have to, everybody's gonna approach it in a different way. Chris will look at it one way, you'll get it another way, then we'll come back together. I'm just asking, like Angus just showed us, let's keep an eye on that. And one aspect of keeping an eye on that is when you show me the percentage of the operating budget increase, I can pretty much tell you that that's what's going to the tax bill.
So are we any closer to determining what balance we want to have in stabilization and free cash? I mean, that was the whole discussion last time, that we need that plan before.
So for my person, again, we're all gonna do this differently. I'm, I'm gonna advocate whatever free cash is needed to get it down to four percent increase on it.
All right, so that's a no, we don't have.
There's a sort of a backlog work in the equation, you should know what you want to have your free cash and stabilization.
You can do it.
Together, in conjunction.
You, you should, ideally, you would, but.
Rather than spend it down to a level that keeps the tax rate stable, that could get you in trouble.
Unless you have a two point three million dollar balance that, and you didn't do anything last year, you know?
Again, this bridge issue's gonna be a big.
Okay, well, we don't even know, do we, have we seen, have the Pinkham, no, do we know?
We don't, it's coming up.
Okay, so, so forgive me, of course, I'm not totally in the loop on this a hundred percent. I'm just, I, I, I'm just trying to convey the way you can approach it, that's all. Again.
All right, so what, what information do we need for Wednesday, then?
I, I think we gotta be as close as we can get to where the operating budget is gonna come in at, closest we can get to how much we're gonna draw out of free cash. Angus, if Angus had the ability to conjecture, whether it's twelve hundred thousand in turnbacks or, or a hundred, you know, like, like if, if you were to say, we, we know that revenue's gonna be up a hundred thousand over what the state allows, we, we, we were fairly comfortable, given the size of the budget and how, how, you know, what typically happens, that, that we're gonna have turnbacks of four hundred, you can, you can just start.
Are, are we gonna have turnbacks? So this question, I've been wondering, I mean, you know, we, we have issues right now related to line item transfers that have been discussed. I'm just wondering, where are we relative to previous years as far as, as far as turnbacks are likely to be? I mean, how, how close to the wire are we this year, and are, are we gonna see as much returnback?
We are closer than we are in a typical year. I think if, you know, the biggest drivers are, are the overtime, as you know, if those, and those, if those are funded through an article, you know, then.
Meaning drawing from free cash.
Correct, yeah.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, then that's, that's, then it's not as tight. I mean, I, I think those articles, those, those expense lines have been part of our significant concern.
Yeah, but, but to Rick's point, you don't even have to know whether you're gonna find it through free cash. You can, you can pull off a projected figure that's, that's ballpark, so that you know whether it's gonna be two hundred, hundred extra in the revenue, two hundred turnback from the expenses, three hundred add it on to the two point three. So you can run some gross figures. Everybody has to realize that there are projections and conjectures, but that ends up helping answer Chris's question. Where are you gonna end up on?
Yeah, I just, I don't know that we're gonna do that by Wednesday, I mean.
Yeah, that's probably fair enough.
The next two days, I've got, like, I've got a lot of other meetings and, and including drafting, you know, what can we?
So we can work with real numbers and just say where we are.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's, that's easy, yeah.
Exactly.
But are there requirements from the state relative to the balances and the stabilization of free cash?
Not, not requirements, there's guidelines, there's guidelines, yes. Five percent of your annual operating budget ought to be in free cash, and fifteen percent ought to be in stabilization.
We should have a general idea of what those numbers are, before we start running the accounts.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're way, way above that for free cash.
Okay, but the stabilization as well, what, aren't the two combined?
We are, but, yeah, we've had a lot of conversations about this. I personally, I think the fifteen percent is exceedingly conservative for a town like this. Considering that's for three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, there are a lot of communities, you know, more urban communities that have much, much, much bigger capital needs and infrastructure than we do. I think fifteen, sitting on a fifteen percent balance and stabilization would be, you know.
What Dan and I have, right, what, what Dan and I had proposed is aggregated, so it's, it's, it's in total twenty percent, whether it's ten or ten, but, but.
So can somebody pull those numbers together, so we know what that's gonna?
I think we could give a price maybe, as long as everybody.
It's fine, just don't want to find out we do something with four hundred thousand, very slow than we should be.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's.
So what is the downside until waiting, until the fall, when we have a better idea of all these numbers?
I don't think there's a downside, other than if you want to, you know, kind of at the eleventh hour, follow the Capitol Committee's recommendation and, and add two hundred thousand to the bottom line without specifically doing an offset. I, I think it's just.
Yeah, no, I feel like that's a separate issue.
That's, yeah.
That's a separate issue.
I'm fine with voting on that, moving ahead with that.
Yeah, I think the tax relief, I, I think the fall is probably a, you know, healthier time, when, when there's not gonna be sixty articles in front of us that are spreading us, and so incredibly thin.
We have real numbers that we're talking about.
Right, right, yeah, we'll know exactly what.
So I understand that, that reasoning, but just, you know, this is gonna be a significant dollar.
Yes.
Budget, and it needs to pass. And, you know, so if there's some form of relief.
That we could break.
That, that is coming from free cash. If, if we were to conclude that we, I mean, we have the highest free cash we've ever had, but, you know, the town has the highest free cash by a significant margin that it's ever had. And, you know, is this a time to use what might be considered to be an excess free cash amount to try to ensure that the budget passes?
Yeah, that's, that's the consideration.
Well, that's the way you could raise and appropriate in a special town meeting too, if you, for some reason, fell short, right?
At the fall town, we're not gonna fall short.
No, but, you know, that would be the.
So we might adjust our behavior going forward. I, I, again, so Rick articulated it, the best that I've heard tonight. I think we've got, you guys can see what you can come up with, given your constraints. We may by default go to the fall.
I just don't want to have them do a lot of work, we're gonna just go to the fall anyway.
But, but, but I, but I, I don't think, I think we want to have the discussion now, that's what I would say.
I, I think with the number we saw, with the, it's gonna be six point something percent currently, if we're don't do anything with that, the number, the increase this year.
On, on the operating budget?
No, it's actually, it's, it's lower. It's down, it's coming down. Part of why it came down is taking the police cruiser out.
The police cruiser, no, the police cruiser's staying out, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I know, but my point is that's part of what accounts.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah, of course. So the four point eight is good, so, so so we're gonna have to ask you guys to make a call as to whether you think you could have something that would further the discussion on Wednesday, or whether we should go through it the way Wendy is, is imagining, where we'll take care of the low-hanging fruit, but leave this thing behind. And to me, to me, it's, it's more like, are we gonna, like, make a four point eight or below? That, that answers it for me, you know, so. Because I don't know what else, I don't know what else, I mean, we've got some other stuff that's gonna either draw down from free cash or, or, or add to expenses, I don't know, so. I mean, I'll go either way, it's assured, but I think, I think we, if, to the extent that we could know, or just a tad more, that would, that would help me make that decision as to whether fall is imperative or whether it's prominent to do what Rick is talking about.
I, I think if you do something this spring on free cash, I think it ought to be, I, I think if you're gonna do something on increasing the amount of stabilization, I think having something on the same warrant to draw that from free cash makes sense. I think the bigger discussion is gonna make more sense in the fall, and we're definitely gonna be much more prepared for it.
Okay. Okay, well, then the side of that is, let's work towards operating budget that's like four and a half percent.
All right, so do we want to vote on the two hundred thousand to offset the stabilization? And so that's what Article Five will become, because that's not how it's written right now.
No, it's not, yeah, I didn't have, I have time to rewrite.
No, that's fine, I just want to be sure that.
We're all in agreement, we'll vote in.
Yeah, and, and that would be also to increase the operating budget by two hundred thousand for the, for the stabilization, right?
Send your motion.
No.
So, so we're raising two hundred and we're transferring two hundred, so it's a total four hundred thousand.
Yeah, and one article, there's a separate article for stabilization, yeah, okay.
Uh, no, it's actually in the operating budget. It's in the operating budget, the transfer into stabilization. Right now, we have six hundred thousand, so it would be increasing that to eight hundred thousand.
And then transferring that into the.
Right.
So it's not four, it's not four.
Two hundred, yeah.
And two hundred.
And you do that because it's, you do that in our accounting mechanism, because it's a state requirement, right?
The rest of me, I know, but so I, I didn't know any of this.
So, so Jenny, further explain it, how, how it's going, so I'm comfortable with, with.
So, so could you restate that, please?
So you're increasing the operating budget by two hundred thousand, because you're increasing what you're adding to the stabilization, and then you're transferring into, from free cash to offset that two hundred thousand, so it's net zero.
Right.
Don't you love it?
And that requires a town meeting vote, that exactly, who does?
Mm-hmm. It's just like when you need two hundred thousand from the school stabilization.
Got it.
All right, so, what do you want, make a motion? Jenny, can you make the?
Let the Jenny say.
Um, so I, I need to figure out how to say, make a motion that we, uh, yeah, great.
To motion to recommend increasing the budgeted transfer into stabilization from six hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand.
Right.
And to recommend an amount of two hundred thousand.
From a free cash to the, to the, to the.
Do those need to be two different motions?
I, probably, yeah.
Yeah, so there's two different.
So the first one was to transfer an additional two hundred thousand dollars. Increase, yeah, yeah, in, in, increase rate of appropriate, an additional two hundred thousand dollars to go into stabilization.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. And then the second motion is to then transfer two hundred thousand dollars from raising, from the free cash to, to the budget to offset the two hundred thousand dollars that are just increasing for the stabilization.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
My next.
You wanna say, you wanna just say ditto?
Ditto, oh, I, yeah, right, I mean, so is there any?
We just have the practice, so I just have a question, put that there. Okay, now I'm gonna put it here, okay, now I'm gonna put that, okay, that's what we're doing.
More or less, that's the first part.
But if we didn't transfer it out of free cash, it would raise the tax.
Yeah, right, right, so what we're, what we're doing is mitigating that.
Right.
So we're accomplishing what, what Capital Improvements Committee recommended, because they, they have a lot more money that they're spending this year, so that's good, but we don't want it to go to the tax rate, so that's why you do it that way. So are we all in agreement that we just unanimously voted to support those two motions? Are we good with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, do you need anything more than that, Jim?
Don't make it up.
Jim usually makes the motion.
They reported, right, again, make it up.
So the question is, who's, who's gonna write this? I guess perhaps maybe it should be me? Okay, Wendy said, yeah.
I deal, okay.
Well, yeah, yeah, I think that's the help, yeah.
And I don't need voter, I just have a question for Angus and all of you, really. I want to piggyback on something Chris said earlier in the meeting about school stabilization relative to Whittier, and I'm, I'm also thinking Paige, right, after Paige has all these, all these studies done, I got a feeling we're gonna be sinking.
Paige, right, after Paige has all these, all these studies done, I got a feeling we're gonna be sinking money into Paige. Um, when when in the cycle Angus and everybody is the right time to kind of begin discussing really establishing a new school stabilization with a with a forethought of we're gonna be spending big money at some point, could be three years from now, could be five years from now, and either buttressing Paige and or spending money on a new Whittier project, when is the right time in the cycle to discuss that?
I think it's uh right after the spring town meeting, because the 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 capital planning cycle is really supposed to start in late fall.
Right.
Uh, my, um, I should have a capital program sent to the to the board right around uh Halloween. So that, the capital program, if done properly, is gonna account for all that stuff. So right now, I think we do a pretty good job accounting for Paige's school.
Yeah.
Uh, but with this study, that's gonna retool some of that. Whittier, we're not carrying anything in there. Uh, and we're not carrying anything about a new school, not obviously there's any, but but I think to have something by late October that actually reflects that, or at least hedges on some of those that are unknown, is gonna be, is gonna require work all over the summer.
Exactly, that's that sounds uh practical to me, and and sometimes it's gonna turn out to be that we just can't afford to fund all the state. Or even the reality is, is you build a new school, the the theory is, is you want the people that have already moved out of town paying for the new school? I mean, it's just a theoretical conversation, but, you know, you can't put away all the money we're gonna need for all the things.
Sorry, I have a real question, I'm talking about the budget, four percent. But will we, the people that come to the meeting, are they gonna know what the tax rate is gonna be after, after they go?
Not the actual tax rate, but we do make an estimate of, and it's in the PINCON booklet every spring of what the estimated tax impact is of the.
Right, yeah, right, it's very important to give that context, of course, the kind, so people look at two contexts, in a way, the first is they look to see how much of budget is going up, people react to that. The second thing, though, is when you get into using free cash for stuff, it can be a little more and more. Then they're kind of measuring whether they like the thing or not, but they don't answer Chris's question of, you know, how much are we drawing down? We have not presented that, I don't believe, as comprehensively as we probably would want to a year from now. In other words, every year you should probably see the planned stabilization levels, because they will be like sine curves. I mean, we do have it in works in form, but but I I don't know if we've ever really had that discussion on town meeting floor or or in the booklet, so.
Sine curve, is that something I've heard that like that?
Alright, moving on.
Wendy, you gotta maintain control, isn't it?
Next sentence, the unbudgeted personnel costs, the select board did uh uh forty-three uh board did uh uh recommend uh earlier this evening an amount of eighty-two thousand dollars to this article. And the article request form, while it doesn't have the amount, the the narrative is is correct in terms of what this is intended to uh account for, which is uh partially the FY twenty-four overtime budgets in both police and dispatch, which are already overspent. Um, and we've made projections of where we think they're gonna be at fiscal year end, as well as uh an amount carried for uh to allow for uh negotiation of contract terms with police and dispatch uh unions.
And again, the amount is, how much?
Eighty-two thousand.
And the funding source is?
Free cash.
So it's another way of of mitigating this.
So where you're just hearing that amount for the first time, if you wanna, you know, table your recommendation until two nights from now.
Um, what's what's two nights outlook like for an agenda? I mean, we're gonna have.
Nothing.
Okay, so we we should probably, I think we should, I, that'll allow you to 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 send something out that that you know, puts the number in front of us and stuff.
For this particular one?
I mean, can't we just read the numbers too?
Yeah, you've got the, we have the breakdown early.
Well, but doesn't that?
No, I didn't, I didn't, I don't know if we want to get into that. No, but I, but the Warren article itself, you're expecting to have a dollar amount, you just said it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so so uh, you know, do you guys want to just, you know, get something uh that, if you want to have the ability to think about this, take out necessarily.
I'm I'm comfortable voting for enough, it's neat and it is, it is what it is. The vast majority of the number is overtime from the police and a little from dispatch.
My question on, yeah, my my question on overtime from police, last year we had overtime from police over, but salaries under. And this year we don't have salary under to compensate for uh overtime.
We may have some, we may.
But but how much, you know, the, I mean, just.
Yeah, right now, um, so.
Last year was significant enough that you offset the over in in overtime.
It's gonna be like that.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's much closer.
Right.
Right now, they are at sixty-six percent expanded, and they should be around seventy-three percent, so.
So it's, it's not, it's a little bit, but a little bit isn't what I'm looking for, so, so in in the absence, because it just becomes a turn back. Yeah, so la- no, last year it actually covered it, I just wanted to make sure it didn't cover.
Yeah.
But you can't use turnbacks for something like this?
You you could, you could, uh, it's a matter of, you know, trying to project where we're gonna be at the end of June.
Right.
Uh, but but, yeah.
There, well, we we in in a way, we actually do, when you go and do those uh transfers and they. Line item transfers are are a way of reducing a turn back, so that they happen immediately, you can do it. On the other hand, you know, I I think in this case, doesn't make sense just to do a Warren article by the couple people.
So how are you gonna, I mean, what's driving the police overtime? Is it the, let me explain the, what uh, what's driving it? Is it?
Yeah, I I think we we talked about it as part of the budget, it's two two long positions have been out, a long term disability.
Free.
Free.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, so funding overtime to fill those, and then there's the whole um police academy requirements, so the changes in the mass policing law.
Which the two main things to do with police reform, one is that the department can no longer rely on part-time reservists, because people have to be certified. Uh, so uh, there's a lot fewer reservists, so that means more shifts are covered by people on staff working at overtime, rather than a couple of years ago, it would be part timers working at a much lower hourly rate. Secondly, when we hire someone and they're going to academy uh for twenty weeks, those shifts still have to be filled. So we're paying someone to be in academy and we're paying to fill the shift, it's been an absolute.
Right.
It's it's been a huge impact.
So that point, that that point is like paying doubles on.
Yeah, it's right, right, it's, you're, it, this is reconcilable, it's smaller.
That's right, so funded from free cash is the, is what this is. That that's the proposal, yeah.
Uh, once the disability situation resolves itself, you know, we'll have the same issues that all other towns are having, which is the the leasing requirements. I think the the long term disability was what.
Yeah, I mean, we had someone out for twenty-seven months getting paid the whole while.
That was last year.
But it is, there's still a ripple effect of that, yeah, that was actually two and a half, that went on two and a half years.
So so that that person's back?
No.
No.
No, they're gone, disability retirement.
Yeah, that's, it's resolved, but but, well, okay, so it's not even resolved, so, that's not, we did this something that we can.
Alright, so somebody's gonna, if you're gonna bring this up, I think someone's gonna have to explain all of that, you know, town, so is that gonna be the chief, is it gonna be?
Who who do you think is the most?
I I think in terms of the overage of uh uh overtime, I I think the chief, he he wrote the memo that was uh, you know, presented for his budget meeting, and that's, I think, the the best articulation of it, without getting into the who and when and, you know, all those kind of personality tales, but in terms of in broad strokes, that memo, I think, summarized of the, you know, why why we're in this situation, but it's something we're all concerned about.
So to Dennis's question, um, the other way to handle it is to um the line item transfers in May and June.
If there's anything to transfer.
Well, that's that's the problem, you you see a benefit to conjecturing whether it could also be handled that way, and then you don't have a Warren article.
I don't think we'd get, I I don't think we would feel comfortable having no Warren article, I think we could come up with a lower number, because right now this carries the full projected overage for both police and dispatch and carries an additional amount, which as Chris noted, or someone noted, is is a small percentage of the eighty-two thousand, but it does carry FY twenty-five kind of bargaining amount. Um, so I think if the if the direction was to come up with a lower number, I think we could do that, we, you know, by projecting what we think will be available for line item transfers, but.
So I was projecting the deficit to be a little bit higher than that's this number you're talking about.
But I accounted for the eighteen thousand that, yeah, right.
I think it's gonna get sticky and dangerous if you try and get it too tight, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's clean and do it all.
Yeah, we're gonna do it, and you know, to get money left over, so, at the end of the year, it rolls over anyways.
Right, exactly, right, but but I thought it was a fair observation, because it it's something we actually do as a matter of course, so I thought it was a big question from the newest member of the planning. Very, very, very astute.
You're careful, you gotta write the rest now.
I'm not so sure I'd do that. You think he's that far? So anyway, we're out, yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, fund eighty-two thousand dollars on Article forty-three, unbudgeted personnel costs, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Finance committee.
I make a motion to fund eighty-two thousand fifty for for unbudgeted personnel costs.
Second, and any more discussion? All in favor, it's unanimous, thank you so much, um, okay.
Article forty-eight.
We have to write a record, no.
Come on, let's go.
Uh, I think I'll do this fraction, no.
And there's obviously no sunset day either, obviously.
Uh, no, it would be a sunset of next year.
Okay.
Yeah, of of June thirty uh to make uh. I'm sorry, who who's doing the one?
Right, okay. I mean, actually Chief Dwyer's gonna do it later.
Oh, whatever.
Yeah, right, exactly, that is gonna happen.
Alright, so do we have a number now on Article?
We we don't, I included the information I have, um. You know, I didn't really tear my hair out on this one, uh, partly because you know, there's so many variables, but also partly because there was discussion at at last week's meeting about potentially uh doing something like a, uh, you know, development of uh, you know, cost benefit type, or not, not cost, but, you know, the economic impact analysis. Which which would be very typical as part of a permitting process, and is not in any way unusual for something like a major rezoning, for a town to do, to hire, you know, this number of firms that specialize in economic impact analysis, and they look at the projected tax revenues, they look at the projected cost of services, everything from estimated school kids, estimated public safety calls, all of that, and they'll write you a fifty or seventy page report and tell you whether it's likely to be revenue positive, break even, or revenue negative. Uh, there was some talk about it last Tuesday's planning board hearing, so, you know, we talked a little bit that and when when I initiated this article, it was with the idea of basically not falling off a cliff with our consultant. If if for whatever reason, either it isn't approved, or it ends up not even going to a vote, which seems definitely in the realm of possibility. Uh, but the, you know, if it was the will of the board to propose you know, funding for something else like economic impact study associated with the proposal, you could do that. So I did, I did reach out with the consultant just to get some numbers on, you know, if we were to keep them engaged, you know, you can see the amounts they've they've estimated it would cost uh twenty-two five to forty-five thousand. There's so many variables, because sitting here right now, we we're not a hundred percent sure this is even gonna be on the warrant.
Yeah, I'd rather wait till the fall on this one, right, we we're hoping to put the MBTA on a timeout, see what the courts come up with first.
Yeah, yeah, there is also, and and, you know, there is uh some free technical assistance available through Mass Housing Partnership, so, you know, it's not like this is the only option either, so I, you know.
Would they be the appropriate firm to do an impact analysis?
These guys, no.
Yeah.
Now, it would be like RKG or or, there's a couple of them that are much more like economists than planners.
Yeah.
Or demographers and and economists.
The Mass Housing Partnership, uh who is that, who's, where's that funding come from? Uh, developers, yeah, okay.
So what's the downside to not having Warren article?
I I wouldn't lose sleep over it, I would not, I would, you know, I put this on uh so to preserve the option.
Yeah.
You know, if we felt it was uh beneficial, uh but I think given the the number of, the amount uncertainty on about the proposal, uh, I wouldn't.
So we could wait until the fall, assuming they'll they'll settle.
So so if it does go to town meeting and gets voted down.
If what?
MBTA communities, yeah, um, zoning change, um, and it goes, and it fails. Don't, we want to start pretty quickly to figure out what has to change.
Not necessarily, you want to find out what the courts are gonna do before you're spending any funds.
Right, it seems like the planning board is leaning towards bringing it, until that settles.
That's kind of the sense I'm getting too, they they haven't made that decision, they haven't deliberated on that, but but when they continue their hearing a week from tomorrow night, uh, it won't surprise me if that's the decision they come to.
You make a motion to remove Article forty-eight, supplement funding from the Warren.
Um, second, further discussion?
I would like to discuss it, because I I I actually think we definitely need that economic impact study bring our goal forward, so then, Chris is trying to about, oh, why can't we do this in the fall? Then thinking about drafting a, you know, kind of an RFP or whatever, or, you know, some kind of a guideline for consulting, that's gonna take a couple of months, and then if the study does take six months like it's on that earlier sheet, then we're really getting into spring town meeting, and we need to kind of pass this thing at spring town meeting in twenty-five and keep up with the timing. So why wouldn't we just try to get some additional money, do that study, um, because the courts, in my opinion, could also drag on for months and months and months, and maybe even pass ours all town meeting. To to me, I think it's, I think it's money that we need to spend to answer those questions that were raised at the last hearing, and they're gonna be raised again at town meeting floor, and I just, I I think we need that data. We have till December of twenty-five, so you could even be looking at it next spring and be okay still. I mean, they've written the zoning.
And the zoning is done.
Yeah, the zoning is some place, but, and so they can bring it up at 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 spring town meeting, which is logical, but I'm thinking that we need the economic impact analysis prior to spring town meeting, not. We don't know, the courts could throw the whole thing out and you wasted money. I mean, you gotta see what the other towns are going with the litigation before you really start spending time and money on this.
Yeah, and and I think to answer the the common question that kept coming up about how much money is at risk if we don't combine it?
Right, right.
Angus, I think, could work that up. Yeah, we'll have something, I I talked to Brian, I told him we would have something for their hearing next Tuesday. It's gonna be a bigger number than people expect. But that's okay, it's a number. It's a number. They just want a little of it. Yeah. So they can assess, yeah, so.
I think at the end of the day, if the state pulls Milton's feet in the fire, not only will they lose funding, there's punitive damages too. So if we get that indication real quick, and we just pass it, I mean, the economic consequences become irrelevant. I want to say relevant, but insignificant.
They're 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 much, I think, it's not, it's not a flying slide anymore, you've got some some known defendants. But but the other thing is about the court cases, you know, that is, we can't presume that the twelfth twenty-five is actually gonna be a deadline.
Right.
I mean, the the, you know, it wouldn't be, uh, it would not be unusual for the courts to say, we took six months, so everything's bumped back for six months or whatever, so.
Yeah, there's 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 another side that says that, um, every community, but most of the other MBTA communities are going through similar um convulsions right now, trying to figure out what to do, and the state is gonna have its hands full.
Right.
Trying to deal with a hundred different communities with problems with what it has to do.
And what's the most light bending spot?
I mean, I really, quite honestly, and I probably, I may be an anomaly, but I think this is something we should support, we should go forward with, I mean, the the zoning change. Um, but.
the zoning change, um, but regardless of what I think, um, it it.
But we we.
It may, it may, it may make, just based on that alone, it may make sense to to take a step back, take a deep breath and 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 see what happens.
This could be purely purely a timing conversation.
Yeah.
We could in fact end up going forward with this. It's just, to Jim's point, it may not be, we may not be put in a bad position by waiting to see how it's gonna go. Right, right, I mean, the state's gonna have to respond because everybody's saying now, they don't know what to do.
So this could be a fall Warren article to do the impact analysis and then the whole thing will come in the spring.
No, right, that was my point. If we wait till the fall, which, okay, I I I don't disagree with being that way. But but then I I just think we're gonna have another tight deadline, right? We're gonna try to, we're gonna try to.
The economic analysis isn't gonna be a big deal. Angus already gonna know. Just like a loose of funding.
Yeah.
And here's what the state's gonna whack it for and, you know, here's benefits.
Yeah, but it depends on stuff people are gonna wanna know, you know, I mean. Yeah, there's traffic and there are people who are freaking out about the fact that we would actually have more students, um, you know.
Exactly.
I can see that. Yeah, and just to reinforce the point Chris made in terms of timing, which I I totally agree wouldn't be an issue. The reason being, this is, I I said earlier, it's typical for zoning, it's very typical for permitting a major development. So sometimes the firms that are hired to do these economic impact studies are hired during a permitting process. So, you know, they're high, like the scope is kind of like a routine scope. It's not a big creative thing.
Okay.
You know, you hire them, it might be forty-five days you have your report. Like they they, you know, they they have their methodology and they run it through their model. And they customize it with your local particulars, but it doesn't take them six months. Uh, it might take them two months.
All right.
So I I don't think timing will be an issue if it was funded in the fall.
Thanks, yeah, fair enough.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
All right, so Pink Home is moving.
They don't do anything.
Right.
All right, Article fifty-five, Finance Committee bylaw. Where is the Article request form?
I took it out. Nope, nope. He did one and it's in a prior packet. I took it out of this.
What you doing? Why would you have to look at it?
Packet because it it is now.
What page?
Inconsistent with the bylaw and I didn't wanna create confusion by putting the original Article request form with the new bylaw.
When you insist, I'll do it.
She's just having fun. She's just having fun.
The only applicant that did not. After I shamed him public. All right, anyway.
And and I'm I'm, you know, I feel, I don't.
You know, I have a perfect rebuttal except that why are we gonna drag this knee on this laundry?
Oh, now you wanna speed things up?
So basically, I just just.
Oh, you're surprised I won?
Yeah.
This one is just changing the form and correcting some select.
Language that I've been, I've been apprised of how people generally now refer to.
They.
They's and them's and.
Yeah, apparently only.
All these nebulous amorphous type of things.
Wait, apparently, what was that?
Only men. I I had him change he, it was in there.
I had a he, I had a he. It was a typo.
All right.
Article fifty-five with the modifications to the Finance Committee bylaw as presented.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, Finance Committee, as Chris said, this is basically about that issue of, uh, defining majority because, you know, when we get down to four, which we have gotten down to, I was holding my breath every meeting to make sure we could still have a meeting. And then everything else is, well, we 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 did the vice chair, so it's a chair and then a vice chair. We've got rid of that Ross's suggestion, the second term. And and so these are, th- they're all rather inconsequential other than the issue of, uh, a majority in the state clearly, uh, endorses that as a concept. I mean, they 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 don't mind if you said a fixed one, but they they go to some pains to describe how you could do one that floats with whoever's then serving. So it's just a majority of the serving, five equals three, six equals four, doesn't change away from six, which, um, we had discussed last year, we didn't wanna get away.
So does this need us to vote minutes because there's nobody involved? You're the sponsor of what makes sense.
Yeah, I I think we should probably make.
Please vote on this, but we we don't wanna.
I I make a motion to approve the, uh, the draft proposal, uh, by law changes to the Finance Committee.
Right now.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none.
I do have one, but at what point would I be relieved of my?
You would leave yourself. Months ago, does anybody recall him doing?
I had to take a very stance. You were trying to, you know.
So, all in favor? And who is gonna write the rationale?
Yeah, you should write.
I'll write it. I will write it. I'll move ahead.
All right, Article sixty-seven, River Road Planning Services.
So this was, uh, you may recall, was kind of a very late addition, uh, but we did put together a Article request form that hopefully spells out in more detail, gives you something to chew on. Uh, strongly recommend this, I I think given what we're seeing with the drought. Gonna be really important to be able to build on that. Drives up after June thirty.
So I'll make a motion to approve forty thousand dollars for the River Road Planning Services.
Fair.
And, um, I don't recall where the forty thousand number comes from. I'm sure you.
Uh, we, you know, we, uh, it's 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 to get us, and and let me actually be clear, the intent is to get us from July first through a fall town meeting. So about four months, it's not intended to get us through a year.
Okay.
Uh, so the expectation is, uh, we'd be bringing something forward in the fall town meeting likely in the in the form of matching funds for a future grant request, but we have had some correspondence with the the consultant. We had a a a meeting last week and, uh, they did get a number of, if we were to do like geotech and and like core, I don't know, sports samples or whorings. Uh, but we did, you know, we did get a number that would use, you know, more than half of this. Uh, so that's a decision we could make. Uh, we wanted to do, uh, you know, whorings at at key locations where the roads in particular concern. So it's it's, uh, it's not a, you know, it's it's a lot of money, but it it's not a lot of money compared to the scale of.
We're trying to keep the ball rolling too.
Exactly, yeah, that's really.
All right, any further discussion? On favor, aye.
Finance Committee, oh, sorry. So you got it unanimous?
Yes.
Yeah. So, um, you guys need?
I already moved on.
Who's ever thinking about?
Right, right. So, uh, so does anybody need any more information on this? Because this is something that maybe we're not quite as familiar with. Uh, the whole River Road. So I'm just wondering, I mean, is there anything you wanna ask this like board or or Angus upfront before we have additional description on that?
Worth like, I mean. Angus, um, do you have, do you guys have any kind of placeholder or order of magnitude of, uh, long-term capital plan for, it's just too early on to.
Yeah.
For River Road?
We're evaluating them.
But we're getting, yeah, at some point the next.
It'll require a second mortgage on the on the town.
Yeah, really, yeah, yeah. So that's looming, but.
No, we're gonna have to rob before it knocks.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I mean, really, the the play is, or the objective is to best position the town to be competitive for state federal but federal funding, state or federal funding, right? Uh, it's not, depending on the, on how the town were to go about, um, uh, a strategy, whether that's to mitigate or or, uh, uh, you know, shore up or or whatever, uh, is probably gonna exceed what is absorbable locally. Depending on what the town does.
So that goes to what you were talking about on another thing, the Mill Street Bridge, I think, where you you've gotta be seriously along in process for them to even take the bone off.
Yes, right.
So that's, that's, that's a thing. So if if we think that the only solution's gonna come from elsewhere, we we've gotta have it far enough along that they can look at something and say, oh, okay, well, I see what you're trying to do here.
Right.
We'll have to know what we're trying to do. It's it's a big da- deal down there, right? I mean, we.
Yeah.
How how would you, what would you describe it as? I mean, is isn't it like the most vulnerable part of our town?
Oh, I think that's pretty clear. Yeah, yeah. And 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 then the question is, what what does it take to mitigate that vulnerability in the near term, in the medium term, and in the long term? And and, um, you know, hopefully you don't look at it at some point and look at the long term and run away screaming, because.
Yeah, because we don't know.
Okay, that's, because long term will be really challenging.
Yeah, it's it's grown pretty vastly pronounced over the past couple of years.
Yeah.
Been surprised, yeah, well, I mean, I was surprised when the Mermack back up to the river, you know, pretty.
Yeah.
That's pretty.
And that was a non-event.
And that was a non-event, so. So anyways, um, I just.
I make a motion to put forty thousand dollars for River Road Planning Services, uh, continuing with that.
Second.
Do any more discussion? All in favor? Aye, who wants to do the rationale on this one? Did someone? Last year, didn't we have some articles like this? I'm trying to think. Jim, whether you love something.
I think I did one on MVP.
I might have done MVP. Was that helpful at all for this?
Um. Okay.
All right, thanks. This is, I mean, I don't think the Warren is gonna be cricket for them, I mean, just, you know, these can be complex rationale. They're not simple rationale.
So sunset on this one?
Uh, would be twenty-five.
Six thirty, twenty-five?
And then there's gonna be another expected requested fall town. Yeah, we're still looking into what grants may, we may be, uh, both eligible and competitive for, um, so I know, uh, yeah, it's been tracking on the MVP, they're likely to make it harder for us, but there's also potential federal grants like the hazard mitigation planning. Whether it's a building resilient infrastructure grant, I'm not sure whether either of those might be potential.
So when you, whoever writes the rationale, it might be proved to mention that we'll be looking for Warren fall just to keep the voters continuing.
Yeah, right. It it's a, it, this is not a one-on. By any means, there's a whole process that luckily we started, uh, when when did you first pick this up? Was it last spring or?
Actually, you could argue that started in two thousand, uh, two thousand twenty.
Yeah, right.
When we finished the MVP process, this was sort of like the number one.
So that would be good for the explanation is this, this is kind of a continuation.
Yeah.
So the two Warren articles we're doing was Wednesday. All right, so should we move on to budgets? How's everybody? You guys still?
Well, we have education, we have Harbor Master. And services, yeah, they're all.
All right, so those are at the beginning of the packet?
They are. You're looking at the, uh, overall budget. You know, overall, found why I thought get their shaded in yellow, the ones thirty-four. The numbers for both Penn Tucket and Whittier have been updated based on the actual numbers, both of which are uh, actually, Penn Tucket's lower than the original, uh, Whittier's a little bit higher, uh, but when we originally put it in, it was my guess, it was, no, we didn't have anything with them, so I I was at about twelve percent, they came in at about fourteen. And then Essex Dag is always, uh, asking that we have correspondence with the business office there. Uh, this is based on a projection of four students. As of this moment, we have three students. Um, if we end up having only three in the fall, uh, we would come back in the fall town meeting to reduce the budget. But we we had four at the beginning of the school year and someone, you know, is no longer there as of this, uh, January first, uh, we we figured budgeting based on four is is probably smarter.
Yeah, so the the Whittier one surprised me. I had heard numbers that were less than that, not from you, but from them.
But things, we had another student, a couple of students.
Yeah, so that was like. This this ends up going to number of students.
Yeah.
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 So if 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 they say they go on four percent, but we've doubled our enrollment, we're gonna go more.
Correct.
So you you you're not looking at anything that, i- in the end, when you look at the detail, you're comfortable with what.
Well, we haven't gotten any detail. What we got is the one sheet that you have in your package. So normally we we get like a a budget book similar, it's not as robust as the Penn Tucket, but it's twenty-five pages and we haven't gotten that.
Oh. And how come? I I mean. Do you expect one?
Uh, we normally would get one. All all we get is the sheet.
Yeah, exactly. We got no staff anymore.
So the the student count increased by two.
Yeah. So I make a motion to approve the Penn Tucket line item budget for nine million, six hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars.
Second. Further discussion?
Yeah. First of all, it's amazing, though. They didn't go much at all this year, which is.
Yeah.
Helps our budgeting process a lot. Second comment is just, it sort of blows my mind that that's a little more than fifty percent of our entire
Yeah.
municipal budget, I mean, gotta be just kind of aware of that.
Yeah, there, you always think of education is about fifty percent.
Yeah. Now I didn't look at it, Rob.
Well, last year.
I know, when we look at it, it kind of hurts. It's a lot, anyway.
All in favor?
Aye, all right.
Want to do all three of them?
You can have to do them individually.
Yeah, but can you just?
Make a motion to approve the audio line item budget to the sum of three hundred thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, aye. And, how's this?
I make a motion to approve that six, one short agricultural line item, the sum of one hundred and one thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
So, Pink Home.
I make a motion to approve the Penn Tucket regional budget of six, nine million, six hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Jim.
I make a motion to approve the Whittier budget of three hundred thousand, six hundred eighty-seven thousand.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Jim wants to vote to agree, which is unanimous, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the Essex, Essex North Shore agricultural budget of one hundred and one thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Still unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, next section is Harbor Master. And this one got, looks like got truncated over two different lines, but, uh, this is basically the the operating limits contribution to the Harbor Master, it's been a small game with Salisbury. Uh, the numbers don't align with what is in the agreement for a couple of reasons. It's not funded entirely out of the operating budget, uh, anything associated with pump out services. We have a Clean Vessel Act for the Commonwealth where we get reimbursed roughly seventy-five cents for every dollar we spend. Um, so we only budget for the twenty-five percent, uh, or we only incur the twenty-five percent. And then the other is, uh, we, there is a, uh, waterways fund that's funded in part by, uh, fifty percent of both excise tax goes into that every year. So there's new money that goes into that fund every year. And, uh, we use that to pay a portion of the Harbor Master cost as well. So that's why the numbers don't tie with what you see in the.
Again, we'll look at it like anywhere between nine to eleven thousand dollars, but it gets reduced down to this.
That's right.
So that makes a balance.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the Harbor Masters line item budget to the sum of one thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I I have a quick question. So Angus, on on, I I know the the Harbor Master thing is, I mean, it's important, I mean, it's been done well enough, correct? I mean, and we're we're satisfied with what we're getting from this small amount of money, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. It's so low, I'm surprised it's so low, I mean.
Yeah, well, again, it it's, you know, the full cost is a bit higher, but it's still.
No, no, but I mean, you know, the ten thousand, and it's like, because it's really a there, there, I mean, the 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 what can happen on the water function get out of hand sometimes and it doesn't seem like, well, I I don't know that we're experiencing a lot of. What can happen on the water function get out of hand sometimes, and it doesn't seem like, well, I, I don't know that we're experiencing a lot of. Complaints.
No, no, my first year, we got a lot of complaints, but since we expanded the agreement to include the visual enforcement presence, even though in fact they don't do much enforcement, but just their presence on the water, I've heard there are many voters is, uh, has affected behavior out there.
Good, great, thanks. I think it's a small amount of money, but it's clearly been successful. Okay, Finn, come on.
I make a motion to approve the Harbor Masters budget of four thousand, five hundred dollars.
One second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? I, Jim's grinning because we're getting close.
No, I'd say we should rent a party pontoon boat, make some trouble on the emergency. That's the old Jim's brother.
Uh, then you've got Veterans Services, there's a few, few different, uh, lines within that. There's a soldier's grave expense, that's what we pay to, uh, the, uh, owners of the private cemeteries for every veteran's grave that they have. Uh, that's a per grave amount. Uh, the Memorial Day expense is what we carry for any direct expenses associated with a parade. Those have generally been, been pretty minor, but sometimes we'll replace filings or flags. Uh, with that, uh, the veterans benefits and expenses is one of the only lines in the entire packet that we have to pay the cost, whether we properly budget or not. So we've, uh, we, we make our, we make a guess based on who's currently, you know, the number of veterans that are currently getting benefits and projecting that forward. But that can always change, uh, uh, but we're comfortable with the amount that it's, we think it's above what we'll actually need. And then the Essex, Eastern Essex, that's, that's a true number. Uh, the reason it's shaded in yellow is we just updated that the other day. We just got the assessment by mail on Friday, so it's a bit lower than what I had carried in line of the shirt project.
So you're comfortable with the benefit figure at five thousand as opposed to what we expended in the past, so you're comfortable?
Mm-hmm.
But, but like you say, if something were to happen, we're still going to.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have to pay it.
Yeah, we have to pay it.
Yeah, but it's based on the specifics of who's actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you're comfortable, okay, but, okay, great.
Didn't we have one veteran who's no longer on the services, which why is down?
Right. Yeah, and, and the year-to-date, granted, that was a February fifteenth number, but as of then, we were only thirty-eight percent through.
Yeah, well, so, I just, yeah, good.
I make a motion, we approved a veteran's services line item, the sum of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Starting.
All in favor?
What, what really surprised me was that the Eastern Essex dropped down, but where we just got that letter on Friday, I, I didn't have any insight as to why it dropped down, uh, but I was very, very surprised.
Well, it's.
It never goes up much, but it typically goes up a bit. I see it drop, it's surprising.
There you go.
And this is an allocation of their total cost and they allocate it up to.
Yeah.
Based off of population, I believe. Percent.
Yeah, which hasn't changed that much, so, did their expenses?
They had some staffing changes, so.
It might be less expensive.
Yeah, maybe the, the former agent was there many years, maybe was at a higher.
Yeah, exactly. So we're gonna like guess it's not, or they made a math mistake. So financial many?
Never.
I make a motion to approve the veteran's budget, high-headed budget of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
A second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I, unanimous.
Right.
That's it?
Yep, we still have business.
Yeah, so, so we have.
What, what?
We did enjoy our time together.
It was great, it was wonderful.
That's not what it is. So one thing before we adjourn, so we, we'll, in time, we'll get some kind of middle street primer before our meeting.
Yes, yeah.
Motion is good.
Oh, oh, hold on, one second, we may not.
Yeah, we're gonna discuss it on Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chris Six is really important, by the way.
So, so, yes. Continue, continue with your motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the finance committee important of this meeting.
That dance. All lives in favor?
Hi.
Hi, great, thank you.
They got everything sucked into something else. Well, I'll be on Zoom by Wednesday, then, I'm pretty sure.
All right, so.
Yeah.
Guys, we have to leave over.
Yeah.
Guys, guys, you have to leave me alone.
Bye, bye, everybody. Well, actually, you're welcome to stay here, but.
No, but you have to.
So item D, middle street, we're referring into Wednesday, or did you want to talk a little?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say briefly with the, the, uh, part of the, on that draft, uh, IMA, uh, I think the, the record that I'm gonna go with that based on feedback I got was to not carry anything about borrowing, but instead to keep a focus on what is fifty-fifty under the net costs. And that's on the second page that I hand out, that I, I hand out. Gives you kind of what those numbers should be as of today. We talked briefly earlier about, uh, the extent to which contingency and top costs, you know, uh, inform how much of a deficit there is. So, uh, but, but as of right now, I'm not intending to put anything into the IMA about borrowing and multi-year payback, uh, nor into the article.
So this has put a lot of pressure on Newbury Board. If we get our component fully funded, you're pretty much saying, please step up.
That's right, right. Yeah, now, if they wanted to borrow, uh, that's their business, right.
What do they have left in our book?
Uh, I, listen, that was in the packet, I think.
By the meeting. Yeah, not enough to cover, but if we get in a pickle.
Exactly, that's gonna be a major, uh, and so I'm, I'll do everything I can tomorrow to get you something by the, by tomorrow night, which is kind of puts you in a position to actually have a recommendation for being comments tonight. Uh, and that's going to include, you know, do you draw from ARPA, do you not? Because that's going to be, uh, you know, if our delta is roughly what it's showing here, then if, if you put ARPA toward that, the amount requested by the taxpayer is not much.
I'm really a fan of that.
Right.
I'm a fan of the bridge stuff. That's what it takes.
Yeah.
I think that's a really.
So let me just play devil's advocate. What if this whole thing blows up and it's November and then we have to, what are we going to spend?
Well, I think, I think we need to know it was going to blow up sooner than November, so we don't get in that situation.
Right, but we have a control over that if we're waiting on Newbury.
Well, we know their, uh, you know, their budget cycle in, in May and June, so by the end of June, if they haven't either appropriated the funds or authorized debt,
Okay.
then, then I think we need to go to Plan B, uh, and, and, and that wouldn't preclude going back to something about a multi-year payback, you know?
But your point, maybe we don't dedicate the ARPA to a town meeting.
I don't know.
For, for an order to do the multi-year payback, we have to have a town meeting.
Yes. Um, and would that be a, that whole special town meeting, or would that be a fall special town meeting? Probably a fall special, but if, if there was a need to do something, that I, I, I can't anticipate why it would, because we wouldn't actually be awarding, under the timeline that we put together for the Masworth Grant, it called for a contract to be awarded in around December. So if we have borrowing authorization by then, we'd be in a position to award a contract. Uh, but we wouldn't, uh, yeah, and we would really have to if ARPA money was going to be used, because those funds would have to be under contract by the end of the calendar year.
Okay.
So, you know, I think this, this question, whether you draw from ARPA or not, is, is a really complicated one, because, uh, even if you have the money, you, you might want to, you know, go after the appropriation.
We could get the appropriation and you could spend some ARPA funds to reduce it if.
Right.
Newbury Board on.
If, if, well, really, if we're under contract by the end of the calendar year.
Yeah.
And it could be presented that way. Uh, I don't know if an article could be done in such a way, like the some of Brooke where it was a full appropriation, but there was language in there to say, if we get the land grant, you know, it's going to be this amount, but if, if the project's under contract in this calendar year, you can use ARPA money.
All right, um, I'd like to table the minutes until.
I killed you.
All right, is that all right? Are you prepared, Leslie?
Um, I, I am, but I want to review on a table.
So are you back to do a review on behalf of the board?
I said, no, I can read.
I, it's, it's difficult if, if Max is sending it, all three of us, because I don't want to redo something that you guys might need changes on. I prefer, we're gonna.
I thought it was going smoothly during the meeting, but if you want me to do it, you can send it in, I'll get it close, and then we can refine it immediately, that's all.
Is that work good? He was trying to be considerate of your help situation.
I'm good.
I actually didn't mind having the minutes early, you know.
I don't mind that either, it's just if we're going to prove it and you've made changes, then, you know, it kind of gave the value of reviewing it.
Yeah, okay.
Funny, guys, when I look at it, my perspective is from what I got involved with, you know. Did Wendy say this or not? I don't know, it's up to Wendy.
I mostly remember what I.
Yeah.
But that's, maybe that's a good thing that we're checking.
Yes, right. So do you think it's not necessary to preview that?
Well, I can preview if you want. Like, on this one, which is the, what's the date, the thirteenth. Every motion that I made, I put in the dollar number, and I think it should be there. He didn't have it, so I'll have it, I'll get these off the next, tomorrow, I'm asking to do that. I can do the preview, just to, I'll look at votes who made the motion and things like that.
Okay.
And if you guys don't like wording, then we can do that in the meeting.
That's good. All right, so.
But your question about the preview, I, I.
If you want to preview it, are you making changes, or you're just looking at?
No, just it gives me time to read it, you know, if, if I get a packet and I have a weekend, this is like for a stepchild. This is, this, this is the last thing I do.
Right.
If, you know, it's, it's like, yeah, yeah, because it's not the meat of the meat, you know?
All right. All right, uh, general discussion corresponds from Senator Tar's office. So this is just what's here? Are, are you planning on submitting this?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so do you need feedback from us on what?
Yeah, I think when I sent it around, I included just a quick list of kind of what we have in the past, uh, you know, it's always under, we're always under time constraints, so there's always this time of year, so it's not, not my most, uh, impressive writing, but, you know, we always, uh, wave the flag on the, on the issues, uh, so it's a matter of, on the ones I sent around, I know, I don't think we'd say anything about the bridge this year. Uh, but I think we definitely want to say something about climate resiliency, limitation, the traffic seventy formula. Uh, I don't know if we want to go back to the well and, on pedestrian safety planning where we've got, I mean, I think that may be why we keep getting these earmarks, because we keep mentioning it.
Oh, that's good.
Uh, it is good, but it's that, you know, uh, would we rather uh, talk about climate resiliency where.
Based on the commissariat tonight, it might be a good idea to stop putting that bug in your ear.
I, I do think they need to hear about the chapter seventy. I don't think they're going to do anything about it. I think we need to wave that flag.
Right. Well, it's, we'll discuss this back when they ask for it. I think it's, they're looking for a project.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's really one of their, their earmark process.
So then, so then we should grab, like, is chapter seventy, is it going to be an earmark?
No, so.
Yeah, they, they even state including such things as chapter seventy, like, they, they, they say it because they know people are going to say it.
Yeah.
It's, I, every, everyone always, whenever we, or we have, we're at the State House, we'd say to the local municipalities, what do you, what do you care about? Everybody always says chapter seventeenth. It's like, okay, we know chapters, but they never do it to me. So it's, what can we do for you specifically?
I mean, one thing we could do with this is if each of you said, I, I don't know, do you want to settle on a few tonight, or do you want to just say, get back to me by the end of the week, and then I'll take what I hear and.
I think it'd be good to settle on it first, and I think it'd be good to settle on tonight.
It's not something I'm probably going to work on until next week, just.
Yeah, but if you, if you have the feedback from us now, then, then it would be efficient for, for you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So anything other than climate resiliency?
Well, the bridge is off the table, yeah.
So, so do we feel the bridge is off the table in this, in, in this particular, obviously that is the need there is much more than a conventional earmark would be, but, um, do we take that, take it off the table?
You could take climate resiliency and then say, hey, if you got extra cash, we can build that bridge.
And this is for FY twenty-five, right?
Yeah, so, so. Yeah, I'm wondering, uh, uh, not to negate climate resiliency, but what, what do we hope for relative to climate resiliency? We mentioned that as, as, you know, something that's important to us, which certainly it is. Um, what do we, what, what, you know, what we've got in the last many years is, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars to be used for, you know, in the general language and, um, so, so I think if that same twenty-five was for, uh, you know, planning for. So maybe that could pay some engineering.
Yes, yeah.
Which I guess is what the earmarks have done in the last few years.
Right, I mean, that's, yeah, right, yeah.
Again, I think that's a good sell point, because we already invested a lot of money in minutes.
Yeah, I think pedestrian safety planning continues to be something that's going to continue to drive costs for, for years to come, so.
I think that should be in that.
Yeah.
No, he said pedestrian safety, I kind of laughed. I love seeing those, give the bike riders four foot signs up around town. Makes me smile whenever I see them.
You remember the backstory of that, right?
Well, I remember the state gave us a sign that could put them up.
Right.
Yeah, I think I, I was brilliant.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, anything else on that?
Um, nothing that comes to mind.
All right, okay, thinking.
Okay.
Great.
All right, so then is the plan for the bylaw amendments. We're still waiting on comments from one committee, I thought, consolidate all that and then actually discuss it at the April length meeting and decide if we want to make revisions or.
That sounds good. One is, here we time to discuss it.
They did a ten-second input on this.
Sure.
Both of them have merit and problems. The dog one. The outright ban, I think it's, could be better on the right. I'd rather see a, an ad hoc committee get together and locate where whatever dog park in town. And then if you have that, then it's easier to make this regulation. And so are the same thing with the hunting. I definitely believe we should have a parcel of name to tell where they can hunt with certain restrictions, you know, posted at all entrances, bob hunting only, things like that. There are not people who seem to get passionate, they could get together and do this committee and come back and make a presentation to us. I think if they always pulled out that, whether they are, they both potentially could go down in flames over a very insignificant issue.
And I hear most of what Chris said.
All right, well, that's, we're not supposed to discuss it anyway, so let's discuss it on the.
Okay. That's fine, all right.
Um, so the building decarization proposal. Um, so is this an action item or discussion? This is a proposal, right? Are we doing, do we?
Well, um, so, yeah, so I, I asked for, across that, two, three, four, five buildings, essentially at this point.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, um, uh, I can go back to that.
And is this in response to the CEC, non-commercial, or is this something different?
Yeah, this, yeah, this is.
Their response to that.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And, and this is much less structured than that other one, than the commercial one, um, in terms of your requirements, um, or our requirements, um, but, um, so. The funny thing about this is that apparently, I think there's like, uh, a subsidy that they have that is going away at the end of this month. And I don't want us to be in a position where we have to say, make a decision right now. It'll probably make a difference of, uh, depending upon what we chose to go with, uh, uh, you know.
Page of that, okay. Seven hundred bucks, the delta on the high end of that building, it's thirty-nine to forty-six hundred.
Well, there was actually, oh, I know that's not there.
It's, it's not, remember?
Oh, no, no, but on the packet page, is there a packet page somewhere?
One sixty-four.
Thanks. I have too many things open here. I was actually on the wrong, wrong part of the.
I have too many things open here. I was actually on the wrong, wrong part of the meeting. Uh, so yeah, if you look on the, um, you know, the way the price would be changing, it's, it's incredibly nonlinear to make sense.
So you think we should just wait until, you know, instead of trying
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I think we should just pause and, you know, so if it costs an extra seven hundred dollars to do this, then, then that's, that's just the way it goes. Uh, I still haven't, um, I, I need to talk with Tracy Watson and, and, um, I haven't been able to talk with her yet. And that's my, my failure. I'm trying to figure out how I wanna phrase this, knowing that she doesn't, she will not at the outset understand um, I don't think, you know, what, what I'm talking about. So I need to sort of try to put together a, an appropriate background. And, and the issue is, is really that we can't expend town funds on Right, so, so in fact, they need to include that, they need to agree to take in their share. Yeah, so, you know, could just prove to be a non-starter doing it with the housing authority. But there, there are certain things, like if, if the conclusion of the study like this was that we should, um, you know, long-term, sort of ground source, um, heat pumps for both heating and cooling, these structures. Um, adding on another building later would be increasing the size of the field of ores into the ground, but it, you know, it's kind of, it would be detailed stuff that might be dealt with at a later date. So, you know, but I guess our, our main, main concern should probably just be the, the path for our buildings at this point in time. For the town's buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you, you're not planning to go to their meeting tomorrow morning, I think? Oh, there we go, a meeting tomorrow morning? The housing authority, yeah, that, that's where they're gonna, I, I gather, take up the, uh, whether due to solar or which
I didn't know that, you know.
You don't need to go.
No, I actually, I would like to. I, I, I looked a week or so ago to see if I could figure out when their meeting.
I haven't looked if there's something posted, but that was the date she gave me when she and I spoke about a week and a half or two weeks ago.
Okay. What time do you know?
I think it's at nine is what I wrote.
So you're getting one?
Yeah.
Usually in the space downstairs.
And there's, um, council on eight? The, the common room. In the housing? Oh, okay. I guess I've never been in that room. I've been It's right across from the entrance to the head access. Okay, all right.
All right, we get on that, right?
Yeah.
All right, the next item is the town manager performance evaluation. So the form we used last year is in the packet and that is based on the job description and contract. So what we did last year was everybody filled it out and emailed it to the chair. Or I think everybody emailed it to me and I consolidated and then used that to discuss with Angus. So do you wanna have a public, um, an open session discussion of it? I mean, is there a value to you of that? I mean, I would prefer to just discuss it between you and I unless you wanna have it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, what do you guys think about that?
That was making me cringe. I don't think you
We just summarized it in public, you know, the actual sit-down.
This, no, yeah, I don't think this is a, has any benefit that way.
All right, I just wanna make sure that's what Angus wanted. All right, so if you get your comments to me by, um, let's say April eighth, and then Angus, you and I can set a time to go over it after that.
Good.
Okay.
How do you want the comments? Why do you want a, like, this is a PDF?
So I will send you the, uh, it's actually in Excel.
Thanks.
All right, and then the dangerous dog, officer training.
Just making you aware, but I will say from, you know, work in other towns, while knock on wood, this hasn't come up in the six years I've been here. If this were to come up or at some point it's bound to, I've seen this be perhaps the most difficult. Of all the issues this board deals with, this can be really, really
Angus' board did have one of these.
Yeah, yeah, it has, it came up, what, ten years ago? So, so I think, you know, I didn't know if one of you, this won't be the last training, but if, if one of you wanted to kind of be the point person, just to contingency planning and the event, something were to arise in the future, that someone on the board has cause I, I would like to go. If I can keep my schedule clear, I will go. I, I haven't signed up yet, but you guys are aware.
Either of you able to make it?
I'm gonna check, I don't know.
I'm not sure at this point.
So All right, if you can let me know, I, if not, I, I need
You definitely don't need to, or there's other trainings that just came across. Uh, I made, I, I sent it to him and to Kayla. And I know she, thank me for getting, I can't remember if she said she was gonna be there or not, and I can't remember why, so
Okay, I feel like somebody from West Newbury should
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I recall, I don't recall if it happened here, but I recall it happened at Newbury. It was a Newbury rally a few years ago and it was it was a long, protracted mess. At least with, based on what the newspapers show.
We got a messy one here, you don't like.
Okay. Um, our correspondence is just the charge form report. So I had a couple of things that came up, uh, moving on to future agenda items. So today I got a request for hunting on, um, the corner of Middle and it's the farthest lake of the water department, Middle and that's the road that goes over to
Indian Hill. Garden?
Middle, Middle and Indian Hill. So this person is, wants to hunt turkeys, it's from Medford. I, I feel like it's a little bit, I'm like a bot, just like the name of his wife and his dog. It's really a weird email. So I'm inclined to just say we're reviewing the hunting by law and if he's looking for April twenty-fifth to May fifth or something.
So the problem is we don't have criteria on this. The first thing is, I'm thinking town residents.
Yeah, so, so do you wanna discuss it at a meeting or should I just reply that?
I would reply back that currently it requires a select board's written approval.
Well, that's why he emailed the stuffboard address.
Right, and we'll get ready to review it. At this point, I'm not
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not inclined. I have to think about the location. So Middle and Indian Hill on the town on land there, do you, so, so you actually mean the fields? Yeah. I, I, I don't think we
Okay, just reply. And then I, the, did you receive an invitation from Woody to their meeting with the lunch? Rebecca sent it to me. It's a, it's a dinner. No, I don't know if it's just the chair, but does anybody wanna go? Do you wanna do that? It's something with Woody or the annual meeting. It's a dinner. My computer is, uh, just running out of battery.
I don't particularly care to go in. I don't know the benefit of that.
Do we do have a Woody meeting coming up somewhere in Amesbury? Yeah, it's gonna be heading to that.
Week, week from Wednesday.
All right, so the invitation is, uh, addressed to Wendy Reed Chairperson, Woodyer Regional Votek Spring Advisory Board Dinner on April fourth. I don't feel like I can turn it down, but I was wondering if somebody else would go, so at least Wesley would be. All right, that's a, that's a big fat no.
Well, no, I don't see the benefit of it, I guess.
All right.
I don't wanna step on Joseph's address to you.
Yeah, I mean, so this is the kind of stuff where I, I, I might be able to go, but I, I know I've got a couple of things in play right now and that's hard. I, I did have a conversation with Wayne last week. She reached out and, uh, uh, it sounds like they're thinking creatively and moving in a potentially interesting direction.
All right.
I, I don't know if they'll have any.
It was good.
I don't know if they'll have anything ready for press by then, but
All right. You're, but you're not, uh, at liberty to.
Explicitly forbade.
So, so really all you were allowed to do is taunt us.
There's even an invitation, so, all right. Oh, I forgot to mention the guy that wants to hunt. His name is Luigi. Just that, that's funny. All right, that's all I have. Are we out of here?